So I want to welcome everybody, uh it's currently about two thirty-five. Welcome to this workshop for the city of Temple City Council for Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. First, does some comment? Very good. Good line, you're up bud.
I'm up.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to take the time to you rather than any council to congratulate Councilman Pickleton. And Councilwoman Walker for being re-elected. Cause I wanted to do a hit, I want to ask a rhetorical question, can't answer obviously, because you're not allowed to. You've been, you've done this job, you know how much hard work it is, how you've done dedicated, you've been fantastic with the job. But I just have to ask, are you both crazy? Thank you both for deciding to continue to do this very fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was so close, it was a nail biter. Uh, next up. WBW. So, so um typically you have three minutes in this session. Uh, doubt you can say whatever you want to say in three minutes?
I'd agree, but I might get it done in three in the context of the presentation that I think is happening. Well, you got it up on the screen already, so if we're discussing it, then I'd ask you to reserve by time until it comes up in the, the normal course of your workshop.
I'll give you six minutes.
What I would need to do for nine?
Alright, alright, very good, yeah, we will, we will let you say whatever you need to.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Alright, so let's uh. Let's just go ahead and skip to Adam two right now, Ms. Henninger, I saw you, here you are. So we'll uh review the updated municipal Texas council government spell county hazard mitigation.
And point and talk the, the clicker, alright, so if that's alright, I'm gonna come and stick over a little bit of the table here. No, you're good, you're good. Uh, so thank you for the opportunity to be with y'all this afternoon. And I am gonna go over, we have a hazard mitigation plan that was due for review. We spent, um gosh, it's been two years working on this. And so we'll go through and talk about what it is, why we did it, why we need it, and then request us. Uh, so hazard mitigation plan, it has not been before this group in a few years. Uh, so just as a reminder, or if you're not familiar, um it is a plan that focuses on the reduction of risks and hazards. Whether that be from natural disasters or human-made disasters. Um, if we want to pursue grant funding for hazard mitigation, we have to have this plan in place. And the focus is just general prevention. So our last plan was done in twenty eighteen, which unfortunately is outside of the window of five-year requirement that FEMA has one. However, not something that we had control over, or even Bell County were part of the Greater Bell County Plan. Uh, there were some delays getting started and um it's been with FEMA for at least six months for review and approval. So we've kind of had our hands tied, but we have been diligently working on this. Um, there were some new threats that we were able to incorporate into this plan. Um, and then for pursuing some grant funding, which we are actively pursuing a couple of grants with the city. Uh, and we're looking at another one, all of which require a hazard mitigation plan to be current. Um, so some examples of some funding sources, that hazard mitigation grant program, the public assistance grant program, which we. Um, are currently looking at getting some grant dollars, we are working for public assistance from all of the damage from last year. And so as we are going through and looking at all of the repairs. And all of the rebuilding that is needed, there are some hazard mitigation opportunities. So that would be a funding source that we could pursue. And then the um FMAC, the Fire Management Assistant Grant is another option. I did not list brick, um the building resilience infrastructure communities grant. As we have been utilizing that for several years, those dollars are currently um will stay on hold. I am confident that once the dust settles, everything with FEMA that there will be mitigation again, mitigation, mitigation grant dollars again. It may be in a different package, may have a different name, but mitigation's not gonna go away, grant opportunities are gonna go away, they just look a little different. Um, so in the process of going through updating this plan, we did public workshops, we've put a survey out to the community. And again, we are part of a Greater Bell County Plan, so um while we have parts that focus just on Temple. We did work through the COG um to make sure this is advertised and put out uh several public workshops. Uh, we got input from our community here locally, but is also we got uh participation from um outside of city of Temple. So this is just a list of folks within that we need to participate. Um, I did lead as the executive planning team member, but we have participation from IT, from public works, fire. We had um a transform temple, we had a lot of input from those that deal with what is impacted after. We have an incident, trying to do cleanup from that, what can we do to lessen the blow next time something happens? Lessen the impact to our citizens, to our infrastructure.
What about contributions from the public, I think on the slide before?
Um, so I did not, uh the slide up here, there were public workshops and there were surveys, we did get feedback back from that. And so that was incorporated into the planning processes.
Helpful and lightning. Sometimes, sometimes a lot more help.
Uh, there were some, a couple of folks who made suggestions on things to pursue projects, and so that was definitely taken into consideration when we created our action plan.
Yeah, yeah, normally, you, you know, you get a lot of comment and some of it is actionable, most of it's not, some of it is. And you'll sort of uh, you know, boots on the ground uh situation.
Because I'm only one person, um while we have a list of people, that's still a small segment of folks running around in. So we can't see everything, so yeah, absolutely, just wanted to make sure we got that public comment, we pushed her for it and we did get some feedback.
I hear that.
Uh, and then um this is folks that are not with the city, that not employed by the city. But we are associated with stakeholders, partners, everything from the school districts, Temple College. Um, we had a couple of representatives and the senator participated, the agri-life extension office. So lots of additional input into our information and our findings. Because part of what we did when we were going through and looking at our hazards is we needed to collect historical data. What are incidents we have faced, what was the damage, what's the? So a couple of the updates, we added um those four hazards over there to the left. And expansive soils um becoming a newer issue that we are trying to fix. The cyber attacks, from the last time we did this plan in twenty eighteen, cyber attacks have become a huge problem. Um, hazardous materials and terrorism, and then just kind of an example, this was a chart from, or this is a chart from the plan. We went through what the hazard was, likely is it to happen again, what's the severity, the impact, and then we did a ranking system. So in twenty eighteen, we only had five action items. Um, we kind of had some generic ones, weren't real specific, this year we were able to increase that to thirteen. We did um keep the original five, we uh made a couple of changes to them. But we added things like um we identified after the tornado, when we had pretty significant power outage, it's not all of our listings have generators. Problem to keep things flowing the way they've chosen, we need generators on all those list stations. So by having it as an action item in this plan, it's easy for us to go in for super. So benefits of adoption, um like I mentioned a couple of times, the grant eligibility. But more importantly, every little bit that we contribute to mitigation saves us on the other end. So um FEMA put out a fact sheet that on average, every six dollars. Um, that we spend, I'm sorry, we save an average of six dollars for every dollar that we spend on mitigation. So it is a way to tell a community that value um savings, long-term savings, we value the mitigation. We want to get in front of it as much as possible, we can't prevent things, but we can lessen the burden to the community.
No one ever asks about the tax dollars they spent when there is an emergency, right?
Know that, they just want it fixed, they don't want to know how much it costs. And I actually was looking at some of our tornado uh damage and kind of where we're at. Twenty-four percent is what we've completed so far in a year. There's delays with insurance, with FEMA, with the variety of things, contractors, um but we're only twenty-four percent in a year out. So are there things that we can put in place that would lessen that burden for the next time we have an emergency?
How much of that is city with possibilities?
Uh, that, that is city infrastructure, that's everything from fences to roofs to images at the airport. And it's, that's everything for the city, that's not touching any pride that is that is so your business. Oh, and I know that there are folks that are still fighting with their insurance personally. Um, there are challenges with contractors, it's just a slow process.
Second time.
Yeah, Jennifer, did you work with Belinda on that number?
Um, I got it from Krista and uh the spreadsheet that they're keeping, managing all the projects for FEMA.
Is it, is it a requirement that? For the city infrastructure, that the city has to wait until funding, until the funding question has been resolved before you can repair? Or can we go ahead and spend the money to repair, you know, you know, hopes obviously of, of getting some funding back?
So we can do any emergency funding immediately, there's no questions on that.
Pences and stuff like that.
Pences and things like that, it, it's best to wait to try to figure out what that coverage is going to look like. If it's insurance covered, go for it, take care of it, uh cause FEMA is not gonna touch that anyway, um but if you're talking about FEMA.
Can imagine the paperwork, and if we fix it before we get FEMA, they won't help us down, so it's likely.
Well, it has depended on which person we've talked to, we're on, I think, person number six. Um, it has varied and they want to look at projects, but this percentage complete, you know, this percentage complete a hundred percent. Been fine.
FEMA can uh prove it and then later come back and audit it.
Yeah, oh yes, so we really want to make sure, especially with anything that um there's questions about historical areas. Or anything um ECA related, any of that, TCQ, we'll make sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure we're doing it right first.
We appreciate that, but it's slow.
It's so slow. Um, so what happens next, what do we do from here? Uh, the request is on council for approval to adopt the plan. Um, I understand if you should not read the eight hundred and seventeen pages of the plan. Uh, the gist of it is it goes through and identifies all of that, um all of the hazards. And then it goes into every city's action items are listed, so all eight hundred and seventeen pages don't apply to us. Um, we have the um the thirteen action items in there. But adopting it, we will take that, I submit that back to FEMA for their final stamp of approval. And then we can immediately use that to go towards grants. And then my, my favorite flat, I can't let go of that. I just, I tried to change it, I was like, no, it's not time yet. Any questions?
So does the process ever speed up, right, if we're one year in and we're one fourth through? Are we doing this another three years, or at some point does the logjam break and we say, here's your money, go get it?
So that's hard to answer, given the current status of the federal government right now. Supposedly FEMA wants to speed up what is currently being worked on. History would say it doesn't speed up though. So I know, um it was Mylon County had a, a bridge collapse after Hurricane Ike in two thousand eight. And it took them almost ten years to get it rebuilt.
Okay, counseling thing for Ms. Henninger?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate you saying on top of that. Alright, Tracy, you ready?
Oh, I'm, I'm ready.
Alright, so Adam three is to receive a presentation regarding the second quarter financial results for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can Stacy, could you do?
It's the two on this side and the one in the middle, the two on the side go up and the one in the middle.
I'm pleased to present the second quarter financial statements. Uh, looking at our revenues, we're fifty percent of, or it's through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, which is fifty percent of the year's complete. The first column is showing general fund revenues, um they're at seventy-nine point eight million, budget's a hundred and, little over a hundred and thirty, thirty-two million. And we're at sixty percent of budget. Uh, and part of that being over the fifty percent in relation to taxes that are uh collected, most of them before. That's January thirty-one. And then water sewer fund, uh we're at forty-six point two percent of budget. And hotel motel fund, we are at twenty-seven point nine two percent of budget, and you look at that and wow. Um, but that this year in the hotel motel fund, we have the iconic event, Tanglefoot. And the revenue from that is included in the revenue, and of course, that event will not occur until September. So that'll skew, you know, till the end of the year. And then our drainage fund is at fifty-one point two-two percent of budget.
Can you spend one minute going over how you projected the hotel motel fund increase based upon the event?
I didn't project it, but that is the budget, budget for the hotel motel, for the Tanglefoot. And as, um, I might have to get staff.
I'm sorry.
It was on it, but, but working with the, the consultant, they, they estimated what, you know, different revenue sources. And then we have the expenses and also we're conservative, you know, as, as we give up each year, recover more and more.
Yeah, that's why that was a bad question, I was thinking percentage and you're talking actual budget.
We, we are actually showing a, a slight decrease too in our hotel motel receipts. For the hotel motel fund too, not, not so overall. Uh, looking at the composition of the general funds amended budget, uh sales tax is at twenty-eight point six seven percent. And that historically has been over thirty percent, I think some of that's related to uh increase in some other revenue sources. Like solid waste and franchise fees. Uh, Avalorum taxes are at uh twenty-one point five, six percent. Solid waste revenue sixteen, little over sixteen, other charges for services at eleven, and you can see on down the chart. Uh, it's another revenue highlight, looking at our sales tax. Uh, if you recall, this year in the budget process, we backed off our sales tax uh, uh estimate. And right now, we're a hundred and three percent over budget. Looking at statewide, and this is actually through April thirtieth, Georgetown on the far left, city of Temple. We're showing over a little over a seven percent increase. And then we show clean on the far right and statewide cities is the bar where they stand.
Sorry, another question, whenever you say you backed off, does that mean that the projection is less than last year? Or you backed off the percentage of estimated increase?
Oh, I should.
Less revenue or?
Uh, in the budget, last year at the end of the year, sales tax had been increasing like twelve percent, nineteen percent. And we thought it would do that, we thought we were being conservative and it would be eight percent, it's our forecast. And I think it was a little over three percent, so we had to lower our, what we had forecasted for twenty twenty-six. And we wanted to back that down.
Still about three percent?
Uh, I'd have to look at a chart, Mayor, and I haven't exactly looked, we increased, we increased the budget.
Ask them as they come through my head.
Oh, that's okay.
And that's not very helpful for you.
But this year, now we're forecasting instead of, uh, we're forecasting that we could be as close to two point five billion over budget.
Okay.
That complicated?
No, that's what I needed, two and a half billion over budget.
Okay. Um, looking at property tax collections, of course, they're levied in October. We get this, the city of Temple offers discounts, uh three, two, one for October, November, December, they become delinquent on February one. And FY twenty twenty-five, uh, collection rates of the current levy are in line with prior years. Where we are seeing this year, uh, uh. Our delinquent collections, we've, we have a number in the budget for those, actually negative, cause they have refunded more than we've collected. And a lot of it has to do with uh. Disabled vets, like that will come in and that had not filed for an exemption, or homestead exemptions. When the school raised their exemption, some people were not good about making sure they had their homestead exemption. And now they're like, wow, this is a big deal, and they go file it, and then you can refund up to two years. So we are seeing that with delinquent, but not collect, uh, current collections. Expenditures for the general fund, we're at forty-eight point eight six percent, water and sewer fund, forty-eight point two five percent. Hotel motel, we are at forty-seven point nine five percent on expenditures. And drainage fund, we are at forty-nine point two five percent. Uh, general fund forecast, uh twelve months, we're forecasting that revenues will be a hundred and thirty-five million. Expenditures a hundred and thirty-two million. Uh, other source, financing sources uses will be uh six, negative six point eight million. And we have excess deficiency of four point five million, but we budgeted excess deficiency. From carry forwards of fourteen point one, fourteen point one million. And so with revenues being three million over, over budget, expenditures six, little over six million under budget. We had, would have a positive variance of a little over nine point six million. So again, revenues at a hundred and two percent of budget, forecasting expenditures at ninety-five percent. And that equates to the nine point six million favorable variance. What does that look like compared to last year's forecast or actual, um? Last year, we actually had a, we're under budget in revenues of two point three million. This year, we're projecting that three point one, and I think it's a, if you look at sales tax, sales tax, fines. Uh, other revenues, interest and franchise fees were reversing from year to year, whether we're under or over budget. That, that is the forecast of which, um. Last year, our interest, we uh rates went up more than what we thought, this year they're going down. This, this is the sales tax chart that, um. And this is. Budget, where I said we backed off, in twenty twenty-four, our budget was close to forty million. And see, in twenty twenty-five, we lowered our budget. Cause we've been having those three years of double-digit growth, we thought it would continue in twenty-four, and it, it slowed down. Makes sense?
But you're still anticipating an increase in revenue?
Correct.
Six and a half percent?
Yes.
Six and a half percent over budget or over actual?
Oh, six and a half percent is over prior year actual. Expenditures, uh, this last year, actual, we're about five point eight million under budget, this year we're forecasting the six point five. Uh, again, a little less than three millions related to personnel lag dollars. Uh, and then operating is uh several different areas, but it is a little less than four million.
Overall, Tracy, where, where, what department or departments is that lag showing up in?
That is another interesting flip-flop, is we, and I'm glad you asked that question, it's a good question. Uh, last year, or the last two or three years, a big part of that personnel cost being under budget was related to police department. Lot of vacancies, your chief, are you a hundred percent funded, I mean, field now? Close though, right?
Very close.
And, um. This year, when you look at. Just uh personnel costs less than budget. It's two point seven million, police. In prior years, it was police, this year it's more in still parks and wrecks, still streets. Uh, fleet services is, you know, commonly been one that's less than budget. But some new ones that have come up is finance, we have several positions approved and it lag, we still have one vacancy, but. We didn't hire them till December, IT has some new positions and vacancies, uh, they weren't on the list, planning has some. Uh, strategy and innovation has some unfilled positions that make up that lag. And then code compliance has some this year too. Like consistently, like streets, uh, they struggle with billing positions, fleet services is still one of the ones. But no longer is police part of the lag. In fact, I think we're gonna have to add some monies to theirs for overtime.
Appreciate about three million of that six and a half is due to lag?
Uh, about two point seven million of it is.
Of six and a half?
That's investments, uh, portfolio is three hundred and seventy-eight point two million dollars. Eighty-two percent of that is in government pools, um, a little less than fourteen percent in CDs and three point five nine percent. In cash that still earns some interest. In their average three-month treasury bill up and down. The city's portfolio, portfolio a year ago was earning five point three percent. Today, it's at four point three percent, three, six percent, and our uh benchmark rolling T bill is at four point three, four percent. So we're about two basis points above our target. And that just shows the key rates. Those are some of the pools we're uh invested in and what their rates are. Capital improvement program. Over a half a billion dollars, uh, four hundred and nineteen projects. Now, the major funding source for those is a combination tax and revenue CO bonds of thirty-three point four five percent. RZ is uh right around thirty-one percent in utility revenue bonds fund about twenty-three percent. Which that will change uh after tonight. Capital improvement program showing a status based on dollars, uh, forty-four percent under construction. In, in the engineering phase, twenty-five point three seven, planning phase about a little less than twenty percent. And then projects completed, a little over ten percent. Uh, wrapping up strategic investment zone, um, projects, we allocated uh two point, close to two point five million. Uh, close to one point nine five million has been expended or encumbered. And we have remaining available funds at five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And that concludes the second quarter financial report, uh, you happy to address any questions?
It's a super wide open question, but with all the, the political. Appeal, et cetera, talk of tariffs, all of that, is there anything sort of um out there on the wire among cities? That there might be some significant changes to revenues, does that make, does that make sense?
I think we're, there's uncertainty and um, and caution in what it could do to your cost.
Right.
Your capital improvement cost.
Yeah.
Your uh supply cost, I have not heard of it on the revenue side yet.
Okay, we're, for us and getting city work, we're having some pretty good increases and some stuff that they're blaming on the tariffs. Is it really, I don't know. Yeah. Think right now it's profit-taking, maybe tariffs later, it's probably. Okay, and that'll, I mean, for utilities like. Right, right, okay.
I have one to say with my favorite optimistic financial advisor, Steve, you may know. He, he's, he's a joy, he is a joy, and he always cheers me up. And he is also got the ability around, and he knows a lot about a lot, uh, he, he told me that they. He he told me that they, I forget the source he had, but. That's what we heard at that economic moment.
Been last night. We will hang all of our hopes on that.
No pressure, Brian.
We will call you for the council if you're. All right, very good. Thank you, Tracy. It's always very well put together. I appreciate that. Well, sure, and uh you know, long term uh. The 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 long term plan has always been, you know, over predicts. Um, expenses, under predict revenue, you should all live like that and all of us do. So we appreciate that you've done that for years and years and we continue to be in uh good financial shape, so thank you for that.
Uh, one other thing, Mayor, did you go over Adam number one in the work session?
We're gonna move Adam one to the end.
Okay.
I asked if you would wait for him to get back.
Okay.
Or I was late.
That no, no worries, I just wanted to go over.
Okay, now we're on a roll, we're just gonna keep going. Adam one, what was coming out of time?
Okay.
All right, next is Stacy, full of good news?
I I I have a couple of pieces of good news. This is more good news than bad news. All right, so sixth time I've done this. Let's see, uh seventeen days, I'm almost right on the spot with what I predicted, eight hours and about forty five minutes. Till we are gone. A couple of need to know dates, May twenty fourth is the last day for House committees to report out Senate bills. Which is important to us because we have a Senate bill um currently sitting in a House committee, so. Um, we are hoping that um that moves out, that's our um Senate Bill two eight eight five, our A S R bill. Um, so that's an important day for us to um keep keep watch on, May twenty fifth is the deadline for those Senate bills. Um, to be put on a house calendar, so those that have to go to the House floor, well, they all have to go to the House floor if they keep going. Um, but for those um that still have to be um heard on the House floor. They have to hit a calendar by the twenty fifth or they're effectively dead. Um, Senate Bill two eight eight five that I mentioned um was actually heard in House Natural Resources yesterday. Um, that went very well, so we're uh hopeful, they left it pending, which is typically what they do. Um, I haven't seen their next meeting be posted yet, so hopefully at their next uh meeting, they will put that one out of committee.
Then you think that'll give it enough time to go to vote?
I think it's possible, yeah. Pretty tight, yeah, it's pretty tight. Um, Senate Bill two fifty uh with its companion, identical companion, House Bill four sixty nine, so. Um, that is the uh railroad annexation bill uh that passed the House and the Senate, so next step is to go to the governor for signature. That's good news as well.
He didn't veto it last.
Yes. But maybe we'll get one this year. Um, so these are um pretty much all the exact same bills that we talked about two weeks ago. Um, but I'm just giving in the red the update of where they are now. So I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time like really talking about what the bill is out, because we've really talked about them, so Senate Bill nineteen. Um, that was one um that we've been watching related to um. Lobby uh our ability to use lobbyists, that one has passed the Senate, referred to House State Affairs. Um, as of um by looking today, it's still in the House State Affairs Committee. Um, and then that next one, these some of the good news, because we did pass a deadline. Um, that uh for all House bills, if they weren't put on the calendar, then they're dead, so that's a House Bill seven fifty five. Another one of those lobbying bills, that's dead, that's good news. Um, about property tax, House Bill nine, that one passed the Senate, uh House Bill thirty two, those are both the um. Uh, bills related to personal exemption of personal property tax, one was the House's version and the other was the Senate. Um, the Senate version is still sitting in um ways and means, still has a little bit of time, but again, it's running up against the same deadlines. Um, Senate Bill ten twenty five, um that one passed out of the House. And um has been sent to the governor for his signature, and that's the one where we have to, any any ballot that increases. Taxes must say this is a tax increase, Senate Bill twenty five twenty nine. Um, that one has passed the Senate, it's been referred to Ways and Means and it's scheduled for public hearing on Monday.
They're not even let know how many bills those senators authored.
Yeah.
Well, it's not necessarily so much how many he authors, because there's ten thousand five hundred or something bills. It's just occasionally, there's a a representative or senator that's on our list a lot, just because a lot of what they author affects us.
What is the status of uh of H B nine, what does that mean or where can it go now?
Um, so it's passed the Senate, it's already hit it already passed the House, so next whip would be going to the governor.
Which means that Senate Bill thirty two is not gonna move, because that was a lesser exemption value, so that's just gonna sit. Ways and means and that's dead, so they're they're going with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar one.
Um, good news, House Bill nineteen, one that we were really watching. Um, it died in uh committee, so that instead, but we do still need to be um really vigilant on. Um, watching for any parts of that bill to be carved out and added to any bills that are germane to that topic. Um, and so below that, I have Senate Bill ten twenty four, which we really haven't talked a lot about. Um, also by betting court, um and that one um also has to do with C O's. Um, so the major provision on that one is that um essentially if um. A city had gone out for a G O bond and it failed that within, um there there would be a. Uh, waiting period of uh five years before they could um go out for a C O on that. So if voters did not approve something, you couldn't just immediately turn around next year and and go out and do a C O for that thing. Same thing, they put that um waiting period for five years, so.
It's three years right now. You still can't do it.
You still can't do it, yeah. Um, that one has been left pending in um House pensions and investments. Um, the next posted meeting for that um committee is on the nineteenth, so.
Is there any of any substitutions?
Nothing has been provided. And it's maybe one other thing of note is House Bill nineteen, if y'all recall, went to House Ways and Means. Senate Bill ten twenty four went to pension investment and financial services committee. So there, the committee that was dealing with House Bill nineteen is not dealing with this bill.
What's it have to do with pensions and just because that's an investment they use?
Usually C O related bills go to House Ways and Means, which I know is a weird title for a committee, but it's essentially the finance committee of the House.
Vintage's thing.
Sometimes it, sometimes it gets sent, sometimes a bill will get referred to a committee if one of the authors are. Maybe and it's somewhat germane to that committee, maybe not, you know, the exact fit, but you could, you can make it work, sometimes they. Send it to the committee that the author is a member or a chair of um as a courtesy. That might have been what happened here, if there's a, I can't remember who it, if any House members signed on to this bill, I wouldn't be surprised if they didn't. And it probably has one or more of the co-authors or co-sponsors as members of the. Pensioned Investments and Financial Services Committee.
Parks, maybe.
Every once in a while, we'll see a C O bill go over there. It's usually have to has to do with who authored it.
Um, so Senate Bill fifteen. I think that's a tiny lot thing, we already got uh bracketed out of that one, that was one that um cities worked on to try to get a bracket. Put in in that one and that that did um happen, um it's in house calendars now. And then um Senate Bill six seventy three, which is the uh bill that allows A D use by right, um is also in house calendars. Um, the Senate Bill twenty five twenty two uh related to um E T J regulations. It's passed out of the committee, but not yet um on a Senate calendar, so. Um, that one's probably not gonna go anywhere, if it's not, hasn't even made it through. It's in a calendar yet to go to the House and there's not a lot of time, but we'll see, we'll still be watching that one. Um, the House Bill twenty four ninety four credits. Um, disannexation bill has a companion to that, it's in a bill eighteen forty four by Paxton. So that one was one that we have been really closely watching and um we've. I've spoken with um snapper Carr from Focus Advocacy in there. Um, he's telling me that it's bracketed, what I can see out there doesn't have a bracket, so he's supposed to be sending me information on that, and so I'm really still watching. Find out um. If we are actually bracketed out of that. Um, so what happened though is that Senate Bill eighteen forty four actually moved. Um, was considered ahead of House Bill twenty four ninety four and it passed to third reading. Um, it could pass out of House today, but I haven't have seen that. Um, and then uh the third party review bill, um House Bill twenty three. Was referred to Senate Local Government Committee and then Senate Bill fourteen fifteen, the companion to that one has been left pending in the House Code. Um, the Senate Bill twenty eight fifty eight, Creighton's um super exemption expansion bill. Uh, has been left pending in the House Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. And then um for election related items, Senate Bill twelve oh nine has been referred to the House. Elections Committee, Senate Bill five oh six has been referred to the House Elections Committee. So because again, because those are Senate bills, they still have a little bit more time, but but not a lot. Um, Senate Bill uh twenty fifteen and its companion, House Bill forty two seventy two. Uh, House Bill forty two seventy two is pending in House Subcommittee on Tele- subcommittee on telecommunications, and I don't think the Senate Bill twenty fifteen is moving, so. Um, water and infrastructure funding, Senate Bill seven, Perry's bill, which is a good bill. Um, has been voted out of House Natural Resources, so it'll soon be going to the House floor um soon. Cause that is a low bill number and it is a priority, so. Um, House Bill twenty eight sixty seven uh dealing with uh water, uh city uh caps for on city water late fees. Uh, that's been referred to the Senate Water Agriculture and.
That number, that telecommunications, is that only telephone or is it like communications like cable vision type stuff?
Um, it it would include um cable, that's included in the definition of communication.
Encore, electric or?
Right, just uh just data and telephone. So things like Spectrum, A T and T, Grande, if Grande, Grande still exists, whatever it's now called.
I wonder if it has, if we'd have any more full on timelines.
And and I think this is my last slide, um uh House Bill fifteen twenty two um related to the Meetings Act. Uh, has been referred to the Senate Business and Commerce and it was left pending in the committee. And then um a public information bill, House Bill forty two nineteen, uh referred to Senate Business and Commerce and left pending in committee. Oh, sorry, that's my last one. Um, uh, there's preemptions on uh local food and agriculture regulations, so Senate Bill um one thousand eight and House Bill twenty one fifty six. Um, is related to preempting local food service, we talked about that one a little bit last last time, I think, but. Senate Bill one thousand and eight has been reported from House State Affairs, um and then House Bill twenty one fifty six is on House Calendar. Then um House Bill twenty eight forty four is voted out of House State Affairs. And then um really good news, the last one there, House Bill fifty two sixty seven, which was. Uh, which proposed expenditure cap, um that one did not make it to calendars and it's dead. That was, that was a really big piece of good news. That is it.
Good work, Stacy, oh, that's. That's a lot and I I appreciate. You guys, you can send us an email each morning of that ticker as it counts.
Is there any discussion or of any kind of special session?
Well, I haven't heard anything yet, but they haven't done anything with public school finance, so uh the last I heard about that. Um, is uh that they've been, the House and the Senate um had been going back and forth for like twelve, fourteen days working on it. Um, so I don't know, I mean, if that. About that, so I could see that being uh a reason for them to get called back if they can't come to. Agreement on that, the budget's not done either, so. Still going there too.
Thank you.
The bill, one one other bill that Stacy didn't have in her report, and I'm not gonna remember the number. Related to the expansion of eligibility for the disabled veterans, deputy tax exemption program, which is. Twenty eight nine, House Bill twenty eight ninety four was um voted out of Senate Committee yesterday as well. And um that bill um is counsel recall, expand eligibility uh for the state. Uh, reimbursement program for their uh exemption of uh disabled veterans property tax do um. It would uh bring in Harker Heights, Nolanville and the county of Lampasses, which currently aren't eligible, because they don't have a contiguous connection. To Fort Palos, um the that bill though does not have any um increase to the reimbursement funding. Um, included in it, so uh while, you know, we're. Opportunity to. That will come from the same pie, you know, just sliced into more pieces. Uh, unless there's additional funding throughout the House version of the budget. Does include additional funding for that program, not enough to get to a hundred percent, but better than the fifteen percent it's at right now, and of course it'll. Drop below fifteen percent next year as more entities are added and as our impact grows and the budget doesn't grow.
Dollar mill.
Um, they are, well.
It's at nineteen.
It it's it's currently, it's currently a little over nineteen million dollars of I N I M.
Right.
And the um comptroller made a request for seventy million dollars of I N I M approximately. Um, but the House version left that in, the Senate version of the budget took it out.
Right.
So you could see it be anywhere between zero reimbursement for any of us. Or they could go higher than. Really doesn't matter what either side passes, because it's a conference committee that decides what the budget is, can you imagine? How many, how many people at six, eight? It would be nice, twelve.
I guess twelve.
So it would be nice if we saw that increase, it would need to be based on this year's numbers, it would need to be the. They, and I think the annual loss of the twelve entities that are currently eligible for reimbursement this year was fifty eight million dollars.
Who was the fifty portion? Hmm, two hundred and seven thousand.
No, that's the law, not necessarily what they, we we lose about three and a half million dollars, three point two million dollars, three point five, something like that.
Four years ago, they're like less than a million dollars.
We're increasing by third, the average annual increase for us is thirty percent, so that number is climbing. Um, so if if nothing, and it's climbing for others too, not just that.
Increase in the number of of individuals.
The value of the, yes, the number of individuals who are. Receiving that benefit and the, to an extent, probably the appraised value, basically the loss, the loss of revenue is a thirty percent increase. Each year, year over year, and so if uh if the Senate approved, or I'm sorry, if 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 the the budget came out. Meeting the comptroller's request of seventy million, essentially that's thirty five million dollars a year. For a current loss of fifty eight million dollars a year, not counting Harker Heights. Nolanville or Lampasses, who would then be eligible and not counting the fact that many of us are growing double digit each year. So even what they ask for wouldn't be enough to make us whole, so even if we get what they ask for, that's certainly better than what we have right now. But it's not a submission amount to make up for the cost of the program.
You have a number for all we'd lose if they. Keep the total funding the same, but add the new.
We can get that, I don't know that off the top of my head. Miranda might.
She might, I'm looking, there's some things, she probably does.
We can probably have it before the council meeting's over.
That, the Senate Bill twenty eight ninety four?
House, it's it's Hakenham Bill.
Okay, so that was my question, that's just bill counting and Lampasses, right? Okay, so that was my question. That's just Bell County and Lampasses, right? It, I know it's not directly.
It is directly. It actually did get bracketed.
Do what? What's the, what's the bracket definition? Do you know?
Yes, it's um.
Bell and Passes or?
Yeah, it, it removes the um, it removes the contiguousness requirement for cities in Bell County. And it adds Lampasses County.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think we've talked about that. Okay.
So the cities in Bell County that are not contiguous would have to lose ten or more percent of their general fund revenues before they're eligible. So the only two, the only three entities in. I'm sorry, the only two entities that meet that definition right now are Harker Heights and Nolanville, but. It, you know, it's possible that. That, you know, Belton and Troy and any other community in Bell County could at some point, they would have to get to ten percent.
Yeah.
Before they would be eligible.
I'd say the intent is there, it's just the execution's not there. I don't even know the intent's here, so whatever. Okay. What else? Any questions for Stacy? Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next we'll receive a department update on Communications and Marketing. Empire.
Okay, um, we were formerly known as Communications and Marketing, but my first really exciting update for you all. Is that we're now the Communications Tourism and Events Department, and so I have a couple slides in here that provides some additional details on what that transition looks like. First, I, I always break my presentations up like this, but I just wanted to remind you and just say, I'm trying, there's so much, but I'm trying to highlight at least one or two things from each division. So the first division that I'm gonna start with is the Marketing and Digital Media Division. Uh, Canva is a design tool, so if you have to create brochures or flyers or any kind of information, um, we are working with IT. Uh, to roll out a citywide Canva account, which is exciting for a lot of people. Um, we've developed guidelines in partnership with IT and basically uh specific people in each department will be trained and have access to Canva. To be able to utilize uh different templates that we create um with the brand kits that they'll have as well, so that they can make sure that they're using the right fonts and things um to make their jobs easier as well. Um, for the most part, communications um or the marketing team, rather, will still create everything that goes out, but we wanted to give some flexibility to the staff as well. Um, a lot of people will use it internally to create presentations, um, and so there was a lot of interest in that as well. Um, additionally, TTX Connect, um, formerly known as three-one-one, we worked with Heather Mikulas and her team um on. Everything for this launch, um, the website, the app, um, the text feature, Heather was really great, and Lindsay on my team. Worked really closely with her on developing all of those, not only the collateral, but again, the, the technology behind. Um, everything in the coding and the different thing that goes into that with the developers uh teams. Uh, the marketing and digital media team is also responsible for our internal communications to our employees, um, and we still have a really great um. Newsletter open rate and uh we get thirteen hundred and ninety to read that's over a border, um, which I think is really impressive. We also um send them to leadership in the departments for people to print out the PDF version. And put it in common areas or the break rooms and things like that to share with that who might not have easy access to email or email at all. Um, additionally, we did a February hiring event. And there was uh four hundred and forty-five job seekers who attended. Four offers were made at the event, a hundred and twenty informal interviews were conducted. I feel like that maybe should be twelve, because a hundred and twenty. Seems like a lot, but who knows? It was, it was very busy. Um, and then for this last hiring event, we worked with HR to um, to create a staff training to make sure all uh city staff who were attending the hiring event. Um, understood expectations and how to talk to people and just some general kind of guidelines for them. So I think that went over really well and that was um appreciated as well. And then lastly, this responsibility has transitioned over to the People Operations Department, and they now have a talent acquisition coordinator. Um, I, I might, I think I'm getting the title wrong, but something along those lines, and they will be taking over the hiring event moving forward, but I think they're gonna keep the same cadence. Um, so we would have done one in August, so I think they're looking at doing another one in August. So Special Events, this is um one of our new divisions that just came over. Um, Lindsay is directly, so Lindsay um oversees the marketing and digital media team. And Lindsay's also going to be overseeing our Special Events Division. And really the thing I wanted to highlight for Special Events is the Outdoor Event Application. Um, we have worked with them. To quickly get the Outdoor Event Application online, uh, because right now you have to fill it out on paper and then bring it in in person or scan it in, um, I believe was the previous way. So we just wanted to make that a little bit more accessible. I know Parks and Rec had been working on um. Getting it online as well, um, through uh, trying to find a really good software that, that was able to do outdoor event applications, and so. We're kind of um working with them to figure out what they had looked at before. Um, did they like any of those? What were the pain points? What were the challenges? And kind of starting that process again, they found one that they were gonna go with. Um, but for reasons, it did not work out with that specific company, so we're just kind of picking up where they left off, um, but the short-term solution was to just get it online. We have a. An inter- internal form builder that we use, um, that we were able to um develop a, a pretty simple form for them to be able to take those online, so we're really excited about that from a customer-facing um standpoint. Communications and Public Relations, so this is our, our media team. So we've recently um completed an interactive map, um, shout out to Kelly Brown and um Jeff and GIS. Um, they helped us develop an interactive map, so if you go to let's talk temple dot com, this is kind of walking you through what it looks like. If you go to let's talk temple dot com and then you click on, I think, capital improvement projects, it will take you to this map. And you can really drill down into these different types of projects to, to see what's kind of going on in the city, or if you. Have a question about a project in your neighborhood, you can kind of drill down and then it shows you some additional details about that project. Um, so we'll be uh promoting this and pushing it so people know that it's a resource for them, and no additional spreadsheets or anything um were made to create this. This was actually created based off of a smart company that um engineering and finance and other departments utilize to manage their CIP projects. We're excited to have this and hopefully it is beneficial for the community. We also recently launched, um, our PR team recently launched a newsroom. Um, and along with the newsroom, a new media distribution process, so police, fire, and city all, um, anytime they have a, a media release that goes out, it goes on to the newsroom. Um, which is the, the background picture there. And additionally, any, uh, so any releases or any news stories, so we can just write an article or, or post a blog or something. And it also goes into the newsroom, so it's nice for the media. It's kind of like a one-stop shop and also our residents to be able to get all of our news in one place. Uh, I wanted to shout out the monthly newsletter, because this is just a really great thing that we do every month. Um. We have an average open rate of forty-two percent, and it goes to almost fifty thousand people, which is a really, really high number. We get that number um from Heather Mikulas and um it's our utility customer, so we update that list um very often with those email addresses. Um. And the open rate is twenty percent. Sorry, the average open rate, so we're doubled um on what, what people open our email, the number of people that open this, so. Really, really, really great data on this, and I always get a lot of really good feedback on the, on the monthly newsletter. Let's Talk Temple, this is a video series that our PR team does. Um, I just wanted to highlight over this last um time period, the videos that they have done. Um, Let's Talk Temple also highlights the CIP projects in Temple uh going on at the time, or things that might be controversial, or people might need a little bit more education on. So, excuse me, the Crossroads Park expansion was in January, and it had actually the highest um views. February, we highlighted the Public Safety Training Center. In March, we highlighted the North P Ridge Road Project, and then in April, Public Works had an idea. They wanted to do a follow-the-can video, and that's what that photo is from. Um, just to talk a little bit about the recycling process and educate people on that. And then lastly, we highlighted the Fourth Street Parking Garage and talked about the um, the ribbon cutting. Behind the City is um also a video series that PR does to highlight um employees who work for the city and also to. Um, to provide some transparency to the services and things that we do. Um, as well as educate the community on the various services we provide, the processes that we have to go through and things like that. So uh, the January one for Behind the City was also the one with the highest views, that was utility services. Um, in February, Noelly followed a street reconstruction team. We did building inspection in March, and then most recently, because of weather reasons, uh, we thought it would be really good to highlight Jennifer in emergency management. So PR is also kind of our Community Relations um Division. They do a lot of different engagement events. They put on their own events, they attend other community events. I just wanted to go over those really quickly. Um, in, in uh January, they did the Black History Month Ceremony. They also did um the Fourth Street Parking Garage just last month, um, that ribbon cutting. And then um with Zoe, we did the District Two in Review as well in April. They attended a uh, BISD did a Temple Bible Church Career Day that they attended in October and March. And then additionally, uh, they presented to NHOA group uh with Lake Point in January. They were invited to that, so that was really great, because that's something we want to do more of, is. Interacting and connecting with our HOAs. Um, upcoming, which we've, we've uh, we've had this event um with Waste Management. We did their landfill ribbon cutting. We're going to be at the Baylor Scott and White Community Showcase in June. We do that every year. Um, we're, we're a, an attendee there. We have our little booth set up. Uh, the City Center Grand Opening, where um, we're hoping that can be sometime in the fall. Um, when all the bits and pieces are complete and we can have a really great celebration for that. Lastly, um, the Chamber started their Military Relations Council meetings up again, so um, we were um, we're back in, in the grind on those. And then we did a newsroom tour for some of our new staff. Um, and KCN was great with that, and then we continue to have regular chamber luncheons with the, with the marketing and communications people there. And regular pit crew meetings, those are our local PIO teams in the school districts and the cities and counties and things like that that are nearby, so we continue those partnerships as well. So our Tourism Division, which is formerly known as Destination Marketing, um, now is overseeing the Mayborn Center, um, and so this is our Tourism Division. Um, the downtown coordinator falls up under this team and just briefly, um. Updates here are the monthly committee meetings continue. I do feel like they've grown over the last few months, and I think more and more people are attending those, and so those are going really well. Just last month, because of some construction at the library, we moved it to the Hub Executive Suites, and then they were gracious enough to ask us, hey, do y'all just want to keep doing them here? And so we loved it there. It's a great location, um, and it's really good advocacy as well for our downtown businesses, so. We'll continue the monthly meetings there. The, the next one is on Wednesday next week, and then we have our quarterly lowdowns as well, which is just a more casual experience. Um, those are usually after hours and um the business, a different business gets to host it every time, and it's just good for conversation and information sharing and um. Sometimes uh the businesses can't come to the committee meeting because they're operating, and so the after-hours one um sometimes generates a little bit more attendance as well. Uh. Upcoming events, we have the Ultimate Selena Experience on May thirty-first um for movies uh this upcoming quarter, we're gonna have, or this upcoming year, actually, I should say. We'll have in Kanto, The Princess Diaries, and then Polar Express for Christmas. We're also planning a City Oktoberfest, um, and then we'll have Kringle Crawl and Jingle Jam like we did last year. So the Temple Ticket, um, they do a quarterly Temple Ticket, and they've recently just completed the downtown issue. Um, so this is really, really exciting for them. It's, it gets a lot of clicks and a lot of engagement, but the, the. The reason it's so great, too, is because it's digital. We don't print any of these magazines. Um, and so with as much is changing and happening in our downtown, it's really easy to, to update this. Um, additionally, this was a capstone project for Courtney, who I'll talk a little bit about later, um, but as, as um, she's getting her certification in tourism, and so this was her capstone project as well. For Sports Temple, which is um a part of tourism, um, the photo there is Nicole. She's our sales and marketing coordinator, or now she's called our marketing, market development coordinator. And then the two on the left are with Parks and Recreation um in Athletics, and so they all recently attended um the Sports ETA Conference. Um, and it was just a joint effort. It was our first time to go. I believe it was the first time for the city of Temple to attend Sports ETA, and that's where all the tournament organizers are, and so. Um, we had a booth set up there and just trying to entice people to come and bring their sporting um sporting events to Temple. So like I said, the Mayborn Center is now under tourism. Um, we met one-on-one with the venue staff, and we just kind of. Conducted a needs assessment, walked the grounds and things like that, just trying to um work through the budget since it's that season. Um, and then most exciting, uh, we've hired a new manager, because that position has been vacant, to oversee the operations and the, the facility and things like that, and she starts on June ninth. Creative Services, um, Chris and Ari. So this is several projects um that I'm gonna just go through really quick, so the TTX Connect. They worked really closely with the event producers on the Tanglefoot branding, which I think turned out fantastic. Place for Claws for Fire, their fundraiser for skeet. Uh, the Summer Reading, they're always a big part of that whole um campaign. They worked with Judge on creating a Temple Community Court um logo. Uh, the recreation centers needed some brand guidelines, and so they were able to get those done over the last few months. Some other special projects that they worked on, it was the. Exploration Station Wrap that you can see behind you. That is the library branding. Uh, additionally, they did an environmental programs wrap for one of the, for one of the trucks. Um, we've talked about web accessibility before, and Ari, who's the Creative Services Manager, is kind of overseeing that effort, um. And so she's been doing a lot of research on that as well, especially Cam. We did a signage audit at all um aquatics facilities, because we were getting a lot of requests for needing signage and various things kind of sporadically. Um, so Ari went over there and met with them, and they were able to come up with a, a good solid plan for those needs. We developed a new headshot process, shot the State at the City videos and interviews, as well as put together the presentation along with the manager's office. And um, Chris also worked on the East Downs Neighborhood Video, which if any of you saw that, it was absolutely fantastic, and he did a really great job on that. So those are those highlights from that team. Um, Ari, who's the manager of this team, additionally puts together some internal staff trainings just for our department to kind of information share together. In December, um. Emily, who's our newest PR specialist, she's been here right over six months, I think. She actually was brave enough as a new employee, like a few months in, to do um a MailChimp kind of tutorial um for everybody, so that was really great. MailChimp is how we send out our city newsletter and other newsletters that we do. Um, Ari did an introduction to InDesign, which is an Adobe product that um, that she's very familiar with, but some of the other marketing people don't have as much experience in that. So she was able to give some pointers to them for when they do need to use InDesign. And then lastly, Lindsay did a um. A class on using the Meta Business Suite, um, because a lot of people are unfamiliar with that. It's. It is a little bit um difficult sometimes, and so she just kind of gave some pointers, and there's good reasons to use the Meta Business Suite. It's, it's basically like having your own social media management tool on Meta. Um, and so anyway, just gave some helpful pointers on that and why we need to be using that as a team. So some other department updates really quickly. I have several professional development slides, and that's only because it's so important for me, and I just like to, to talk about the great team that we have. So in January, we did a kickoff meeting, um, when everybody was back from um vacation and taking time off, and the dust had settled from all the craziness of the holidays. Um, and we just, we just were really excited to get together, and we talked about a lot of different things, some of our goals, things we accomplished, things we want to work on. Um, as well as we came up with some I-Will Principles that we based off of the city's core values that are very important, and we wanted to. Develop some I-Will Principles that we can strive to work towards every day when we come into work, and it's kind of our own little mini set of, of core values for our department. Um, and then when I do our, um, when we do our department's performance reviews, we'll um kind of rate them on how they are exhibiting these traits as well. For additionally, for professional development, we started a book club um several months ago, and we just finished our first book. It's called Be the Unicorn. Our second book, uh, people got to vote, they got to share their ideas for books, and then they got to vote, so our next one is by Dale Carnegie. It's called How to Make Friends and Influence People. Um, I'm not a reader, but I'm trying to be positive, and I know this is for the real.
Be positive.
I thought that was. Yeah. So I'm trying to be positive and set reminders. I have. So I'm trying to be positive and set reminders. I have to remember to read, do it. So anyways, it's going good and it got really good feedback on the first one. So. Uh, the next thing is in June, we're going to Tamiyo, which is kind of our biggest conference, um, at least for Texas. And uh, me, Lindsay and Ambry are presenting again. We presented at three C M A in September last year on internal communications. And then that one was selected for Tamiyo. So we get to present on that in June at Tamiyo. And then I was selected as the Tamiyo Region Five Director. Um, I can't remember all this. I really should have found a map and put that up here, but um, Region Five is actually pretty big. I know it includes Round Rock and Austin and Colleen and um, all of this area. So Lakeway, I don't know. Um, but anyway, selected as a two-year term, I'm very excited, but also nervous because I already feel like there's so much going on and but I know it'll be a good growth thing and I'll learn so much. Um, so I'm excited for for that, for getting to network and um, grow closer with Tamiyo.
Tell us a little bit about the selection process.
So.
If you like miss a meeting and you guys.
No. So I've been on the Tamiyo Awards Committee and that was kind of me like dipping my toe in being involved. And um, Sarah Grisilios, who is fantastic, she's, so that's Will Hampton. He works with S G R now and kind of does his own thing, but he was the Director of Communications in Round Rock. Sarah's the new Director of Communications in Round Rock and she contacted me and said, I think you should apply for Region Five Director. And I said, thanks, but I'll think about it. Um, and so anyway, ended up basically people, you just reply or people can nominate you. And then you're selected by their um, nomination committee.
Good. Congratulations. We appreciate you taking on the extra effort. That's that's good for you and good for Tamiyo.
Yeah, I think so too. Um, so this is Sydney on the left. Sydney is the P D P I O. And then Emily is over on the right. Emily's our PR specialist. They attended a strategic P I O course um, for uh, for just general communication strategy, but also kind of tied into crisis communications and things like that in March. So I wanted to shout them out. Additionally, the PR team also uh, did a citywide media training um, where there are select individuals who attend that mostly leadership. Um, but we had an amazing turnout this year. And we just go over kind of media training policies, but we try and keep it interesting. So this year there was some interactive questions and things like that. We got some good feedback. Um, and so uh, we do that annually. We do that once a year. Noelly um, is graduating from the T C U program that I've spoken to y'all previously about. Um, and I don't think we're gonna put anybody else in the program. Now they've actually upped the requirements a little bit too for the program where you have to have more, which I think totally makes sense because otherwise everybody would want to be B P C. Um, but we're really, really um, excited for Noelly. And through this program, Noelly was able to um, update our community engagement plan for the city. When Lindsay graduated, she did our um, strategic communications plant update because the last time we did that was in twenty twenty. So we've updated that. So we're good um, for the next few years. So Courtney is who I mentioned earlier with the temple ticket. Um, Courtney is in our tourism division and she is graduating in June with her C T E, which is her Certified Tourism Executive um, Certificate. And she's fantastic. She is um, I think she's worked here for two, three years. Um, and she just has a great attitude. She's an outstanding writer. Comes up with really great content. So she is a huge asset for our tourism team. Um, we also are trying out kind of a new thing. Um, I wanted to be able to provide counsel and other leadership a closer look into our activities and some of our data more than what I could provide in these meetings. So my team has helped me create this um, leadership report is what I call it. And we're going to be doing these quarterly. Um, and so we launched the first one in January and we just hope to do um, one each quarter. And so this with Mike's help, we were um, able to uh, an encouragement, I should say. We were able to do a focus group with Lake Belton High School um, on the new water tower redesign that's going and on their water tower inside the school. And so Noelly and Ari and I went to Lake Belton one day and we met with some students and some alumni and we had, you can see our presentation. It was interactive. We were trying to reach our audience. And so we said, get out your phones, take some, we had a poll and so they got to answer questions on what resonates with you more? What words do you feel like describe Lake Belton High? So they answered questions on the slides and then we also just had some organic conversation with them and it went really, really well. And we felt like we had some clarity after we met with them as well. I think this is my last slide. So this is just our department awards um, for this last six months. So N A G C, which is the National Association of Government Communicators. We placed for our employee newsletter that goes out to our employees. We uh, we've got an award for the business plan and the annual report category. Um, and we recently, with the help of the finance team redesigned that plan and they put a lot of work into that as well. Um, our it we are info, there's an infographic category, which is like, it seems kind of like a boring category, but really our Holly Jolly Temple ad that we did and um, I don't remember what publication was, maybe Tech Appeal. Um, was amazing. And so we knew immediately as soon as that was created, like we're submitting that for something and it fit perfectly in infographic. Um, the Let's Talk Temple video series that I was speaking about earlier, where we talked about C I P projects that won a an award. Um, and then additionally, we did a Let's Talk Temple pavement management specific video series as well, um, to go over the different types of ways that we can manage pavement and kind of explaining those to our residents and why we would use one and not the other. So that got an award. For Tamiyo, which is where we're going in a couple of weeks, we got the uh, an award for flyers and posters category for the Central Texas Air Fest. We got an award in special publications for the Heart to Home Adoption Guide. The next category, which is special or one-time program, we applied Holly Jolly uh, Temple, which was a a video that Noelly made. And then we applied the tornado video that we, and they didn't tell us which one place. So it's one of those. Um, and then we won an award for our marketing plan for Holly Jolly, which was very robust. We got an award for uh, the Heart to Home logo. And Community Summit finally won an award. I'm so excited um, for recurring event. And then best use of photography for the tornado photography um, that we have. And then uh, Lindsay's C P C Plan won an award under best strategic plans. So the only one that's not on here is three C M A and we don't go to that until September. So we won't find out about those awards until I meet with y'all again. And that is it.
Very good. Thank you. Now, something for Heather?
I, Noelly's doing such a great job. I think the informative videos are really interesting and she keeps them light and um, they are. I think they're helping.
And you know, usually it's like, we want videos that are short, like thirty seconds or less. But when when she shows me them after she gets them edited and cut and everything, I don't get bored and I'm like four or five minutes in and I make it through okay. Because we just, our attention spans aren't like that. But I do feel like they're very engaging and she does do a really good job. Thank you.
Good, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep your, yes, sir.
Okay, so uh, Mayor Counselor, thanks for letting me talk today. So uh, we are currently at a hundred and thirty-six personnel. That's including one over our position. Um, that's a hundred and thirty certified positions and six uh, seven. Um, a hundred and twenty-two of those are in uh, our operations or they're the ones that ride the big red trucks. And so uh, they're the ones out there getting it done every day. Currently, right now I have a hundred and twelve on apparatus and uh, ten that are either in the academy or getting ready to go. Uh, seven are currently in our uh, our training academy. And I have three that are gonna be starting at Colleen on Monday in the training. So um, they're pretty big shape there. Uh, administration, we have fourteen and we are currently staffed at that fourth. So incidents for this year, we are on another record pace this year for uh, for incidents. Um, we are currently uh, just a little bit over nine thousand calls for for the year, just uh, just halfway into the to the year. Um, of those fire calls, three hundred or about three percent EMS uh, in rescue, fifty-five percent or almost five thousand. Uh, hazardous conditions, a hundred and sixty-three or two percent, service calls about ten percent, uh, good intent, uh, twenty-four percent. Just a little bit over two thousand and then false calls, uh, four hundred and seventy-seven. And then others, which are typically something to do with weather, like an arcing power line or something along those lines. Um, are at right at sixty-six or about one percent of our calls. Uh, that's about an average of forty-three times a day. And as I say, no one wakes up this morning and said, hey, I'm gonna schedule a call with the fire department or I'm gonna schedule my house fire or my car into my house or a gasoline, any of those other things. And so uh, again, forty-three times a day on average, we're out there helping a citizen that is completely caught unsuspectingly. So we're uh, if you just kind of look at it, we're projecting a little bit over fifteen thousand, six hundred calls for the year. Uh, and uh, again, on pace for a record. Uh, fires are the one that's really interesting this year. So again, about fifty-eight percent or so into the uh, to the year. And we already have three hundred fire calls. Um, our biggest year since I've been here has been just a little bit over four hundred. Uh, so as you can see, we're probably gonna bust the top off of this one this year. Um, therefore, while we were really running hard on uh, grass and brush fires. Um, and we are seeing more and more of those as the city continues to grow into some of the rural areas. Um, we're projecting five hundred and seventeen, which is gonna be about a hundred more than we've ever seen before uh, in. Um, and again, you can kind of go around. We've had forty-three house fires already, twenty-eight uh, vehicle fires. Uh, almost a hundred grass and brush fires, uh, rubbish and dumpster fires ninety-two. And then other fires, which just don't fall into any of those categories, got twenty-eight. And like I said, we're not even too into our busiest season yet, which is uh, the summer. Um, and with the the high heat here, I'm expecting the grass and brush fire season to get going again. Um, and then fall heating season is another one. It's a real busy. So just looking uh, through our uh, our last ten years on calls, um, you can see we kind of trended, we're trending up a little bit. Then we uh, had COVID and then uh, we trended down. But now we are on that trend back up and we're seeing a slow growth each and every year. Uh, now these are responses and and uh, I I I've explained that I think in past meetings and stuff. Uh, the difference between a call and a response, a call is just a single event and a response. Uh, one single event may get like four trucks that go to it and each one of those is a response. So if we have a house fire, it's not unusual for us to set have six apparatus go to that call. And so that would be six different responses. And that's why there's a big difference between those. Uh, but on average, uh, you can see we have about fifty-one responses per day. That that means we're running uh, multiple multi-vehicle uh, responses. Um, and so again, that number has just continuously gone up uh, in the last ten years. Uh, if you look over here on the the left-hand side, um, by station, uh, that's our call volume. Uh, station one down here in downtown, which actually has the smallest geographical area of all of our stations, is by far and away the busiest station in town. Uh, station three out on Midway is next. Uh, station four is up after that with uh, with that's fifteen hundred. And then it just kind of walks on down. Uh, the one that's really been interesting the last several years is station seven. Um, they, when I got here, they were the least busy station. Um, and now they are, I think it's fourth or fifth busiest. Um, and we are just continuing to see that number go up as the development happens out on the west side. And there's kind of our uh, history of that for about the last nine years. Last year we had almost nineteen thousand responses and we are again on uh, on par to do that. I'm thinking that if uh, things continue like uh, like the year has kind of gone so far, we're gonna bust the twenty thousand uh, mark on responses for uh, for apparatus.
It'd be interesting to see population growth and the as the calls go up.
Yep. I I may try to do that for our next one, uh, put that in and the population.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do on that. So one thing I know that we talked a lot about um, over the last uh, especially a couple of years are vehicles, especially with solid waste in us. We have the uh, the bulk of the big trucks and kind of specialty trucks in the city. Um, and they have become harder and harder to uh, to get to receive. Uh, but luckily with uh, the help of purchasing and finance and city manager's office, we've been able to uh, pre-order uh, was what I call it. Um, a lot of our vehicles. So before the budget year, before we've actually paid for it, I'm able to actually submit an order and get in line for that truck. Um, and so this is what we currently have pre-ordered. The only one that's not been ordered is this uh, replacement engine that's in twenty twenty-eight. Everything else I have on order uh, currently. Um, and just to kind of give you an example, the twenty twenty-three engine was pre-ordered in twenty twenty-two. Um, and we are hoping to finally get it this fall. Uh, so about three years, the, when we did the pre-order, the estimate was uh, eighteen to twenty-two months. And you can see we did not make that. Um, the twenty-four engine um, is actually on the uh, uh, actually has been uh, or I didn't update that one. That one's actually uh, been moved up. Uh, the twenty oh, those are squads. That's why I'm uh, looking off there. And the twenty-five engine in uh, the fall or or winter of twenty-six is looking pretty good. Uh, we got kind of a unique opportunity. The city of Denton had a couple of trucks on order and they were actually in line before us. Uh, but they've had some issues with bonding and so they had them to slow their uh, their acquisition down. Um, and we were very lucky to be be ready. And so we were able to bump our two up. So the twenty-four engine and the twenty-five engine were actually gonna be it earlier now. And so we we were able to just basically swap spots with Denton. Um, and in your next council meeting, not tonight's, but the next one, that twenty twenty-five engine, the actual purchase order request is gonna be uh, on that agenda.
Yeah, put money down to hold the place?
No. So it's a really unique thing that uh, that our vendors allowing us to do. We submitted what's called a letter of intent to them. Um, and basically all we're doing is saying, hey, we intend to buy this and we intend to pay for it on such and such a date. Um, and they will accept that and place the order and here selects them do that. Uh, you know, the interesting thing, kind of like what what happened to Denton, if we would ever have to back out for whatever reason, someone's standing in their way.
Right, right.
And so they would either, uh, and we've seen this happen with some other departments. They would either jump into that spot if we had to delay it. Or if it was just one of those, hey, we just can't buy the truck, someone's gonna jump in and buy that truck.
Yeah.
You know, it's not gonna set, it's not gonna settle. And that's one thing that everybody's, you know, uh, i- if you see a vehicle, you better jump on it. That's the one.
The one we got from Dick to meet our exact original specs or we have to take live with something.
No, they'll be our exact original specs. So we just literally traded the spot. No, actually, uh.
It wasn't, it wasn't the truck they ordered, just the spot.
Just a spot. That's correct. Yeah. So the only one we've done any reviews on is the twenty-three engine. Uh, we've done the squads, um, all of the squads, all three of the squads, and then the tanker. Those are all in in process. I think the only one currently at this moment being built is the new tanker. Um, the other, well, I'm sorry, and one of the squads. Um, the others are are still waiting processing. So they haven't actually started down the line yet. Uh, same with that twenty-three engine. They have not actually started building it. I'm expecting to get a, an email any day telling me that it started the process. But it normally, and you'd think it takes a lot longer. It takes about three or four months to build an engine. So uh, it's really, it's a pretty quick process. So uh, once they get started on it, it's just getting the time and the place to do it. Alright, so uh, last week, uh, and I don't know if everybody uh, got notified of it or not, but uh, we had a very busy Wednesday back a few, couple of weeks ago. Uh, we had a gas leak over in uh, North Temple. Uh, and we had two structure fires. Um, and then we had some weather coming in. And so um, this was all within just a few hours. Uh, that evening started about four, forty-five, four-thirty and went till about eight o'clock that night. And so we were very busy. But the reason why that's in there is just kind of show the diversity of the calls that we go on. Um, and and at any one given time. So uh, again, very different uh, individual calls. And I I can you get the video to play on the this gas one here? I don't know if you've ever heard of gas leak before, but.
Like somebody dropped the shovel and ran there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's why we had to do a a complete two-block circle evacuation out there. So um, a lot of great help from uh, uh, from the marketing communications folks and and from uh, P D helping us uh, with the evacuation and then the notification and stuff. And then library, we're letting this in, uh, the folks that evacuated uh, up there to get out of store. Because there's a lot of folks were just like, where do I go to get out of storm and, you know, not be in my car or something. So we were able to use the library to do that. So very much appreciate that. Made the, made the evening a lot easier for us.
I think this is a, would you say this is a good example of a day when having two battalion you know, on duty at a time, splitting the the city into two battalions because you had at least three major events with the, with your time watching the weather and really.
Absolutely. This is, this is exactly why we're wanting to do it. Um, we we are getting more and more of these major calls at, you know, multiples at a time. And so we were just happened to be lucky. It was a weekday and uh, Chief Bush and I had not left. And so we kind of split up and uh, our on-duty chief went to the gas leak. Um, and then uh, we kind of split up the other calls. Um, but then we were also, as soon as we finished ours. Um, but then we were also, as soon as we finished ours, we'd go back and help with the gas leak as well. So, uh, absolutely. This is one of the reasons why we need that position. Yeah. Alright, so actually I have Landy here, so I'm gonna let him talk about this one. So he wasn't expecting this, so.
Completely not prepared. Uh.
Yes, stand up though.
Uh, I don't even know what to actually talk about because none of those numbers are right.
You don't say that. Hold that. Sorry.
Um, yeah, we're super busy. The city's growing a lot. We're doing a lot of plan reviews. We've asked for some things through the budget process to kind of alleviate some of those pressures. So we, uh, continue to be able to review and inspect as well as continue doing, uh, fire cause determinations. We had a fire death, uh, last week as a matter of fact. And that takes a, takes up a lot of our resources. I'm sorry. I wish, uh, I could give you some updated numbers. I, I just don't have them right now. Just we are, we, uh, stay busy and, um.
Yeah. Spend, spend just a minute. So I don't know. I'm assuming maybe the rest of the council doesn't know it. The difference between regular building inspections, when you say fire inspections, is that going to like a new construction, something in our building, uh, our permit, not a permit, guys, our inspectors would have gone to, you know, another fire inspector on top of that.
So we continue, we, uh, work in concert with permit and the building department and their building reviewers. So we all take a look at the building departments that come in. Uh, they look at it from the IBC or the building code side. We look at it from the adopted fire code side. A lot of that stuff intermingles because it's better to have more than one person looking at life safety stuff, right? Uh, so along with that, we have a set of inspections that we do for new construction, uh, that, uh, get them from, uh, plan review, sprinkler systems, alarms, firewalls, whatever, all the way down to a fire final where we can, uh, issue the C of O.
Are you holding on site to do that? Some of them, all of, a hundred percent of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
Uh, another thing we do is fire safety inspections. These are unscheduled inspections that we do, uh, in our, uh, I guess what we would call like target facilities. So like we try to get out restaurants, we try to get out hotels, apartment complexes, places like that, and do regular, uh, inspections. They're not really, uh, annual, but we try to get theirs, uh, when we can with our other workloads. So those are the two kind of different categories of fire inspections that you'll see us do.
Yeah.
So Fire Marshal's Office as a whole, and we'll talk a lot more about this in budget because we've got some resources need there. But they, they do plan review for, so any building permit, but also a subdivision plan, you know, would go through, uh, Fire, uh, Marketing Office. They do the inspections for those. They do investigations for arson or fire, uh, that. They do, uh, the hiring process for new firefighters. So they do background investigations and that process for, uh, when positions are hired and then they also, uh, manage the public information program for fire.
Wow, okay.
And they do a lot with those, uh, four people up there.
And then, yeah, then a few overtime folks that come in on their off days that are, you know, firefighters otherwise, but come in, they've received some retraining and help us out with that. So, um, it's, uh, Landy's done a great job, uh, managing the vision and has really, uh, actually really upped the game, uh, with the Fire Marshal's Office. And so, uh, I think really gotta brag on him and all he's done in the, in the last few years as the Fire Marshal. Um, you know, particularly this, this number of over a thousand fire inspections. Um, I mean, that's a, that's a incredible number. It needs to be higher than that. I mean, we both recognize that, but just the fact that we've gotten to that point currently is a testament to Landy and, and, uh, his staff and, and the management of the program. Um, but, uh, again, they're doing, they're doing some really great things and, and, uh, and all. So we hope to continue that and get some more done. It's, uh, like with the, like, uh, Bryn said, with the hiring and stuff, uh, had a gentleman, uh, announce his retirement today and they've already got folks ready to go for, uh, you know, that replacement. So, um, they're very efficient at making sure that we stay at full staff. Uh, Todd Blockmark. Uh, so emergency management and, uh, have a lot of, obviously a lot that goes on there. And of course Jennifer was here talking to you a little bit about, uh, the hazard mitigation plan that, uh, her and her staff worked on. Um, and yeah, it's just the staff too, but it still, uh, staff worked on it. Um, but the two pictures you see there, the one on the right is a, uh, and, uh, in ICS or an insect man class, uh, three to four hundred. We host one of those a year and we host one a year. So that way we have two in Bell County. Um, and so that was the last one that, uh, that we hosted. Um, uh, Jennifer, the clean, uh, emergency manager and, and myself are certified to teach those. And so we're usually the ones that cover those. Uh, and then this one over on the left is a community class. It was actually a, a storm watcher class or a storm class that the National Weather Service came down from, uh, Fort Worth and put on for us. Uh, really a, uh, a, a good program, very well attended, almost a hundred people came to that. So, um, we were really surprised. We were expecting about fifty or sixty and we ended up with almost a hundred people. So, uh, fantastic program looking to grow that each year or so, uh, and a lot of good feedback on that. And then obviously sirens are other big things that she takes care of and, uh, we've been really great and, and she's really, uh, uh, taking that program on and, and, uh, been getting some of these sirens in. Uh, right now of all the ones that we've requested, we've only got one more left to go in next year's budget. Uh, the one that's up there, uh, kind of in northeast Temple is actually scheduled to go and be installed here in the next month or so. So, uh, again, she's doing fantastic work on that.
I was on my motorcycle the other day right by the one on Cedar, right in there when it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're often surprised when people say, I can't, we can't hear these things. I'm like, how can you not?
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, yeah, they, they, they do a pretty good job. And like I said, we've had a lot of good feedback on those, especially since the tornado of last year. So. Um, so a, a lot of talk about training. So, uh, obviously the training center got completed, uh, back a, a few months ago. And this is some of the apparatus out doing the driving skills, um, out there. It was very nice for the first time to have somewhere that we could send the fire trucks and not have to worry about turning out the, the asphalt or the concrete. Um, and so it's been a fantastic facility for us. I know PD's been out there quite a bit. It's my, my skin marks, it's not. But, uh, it's been actually fantastic to have out there that, uh, that driving pad has been, uh, a great addition. And, uh, like I say, both of us are using it, uh, uh, quite a bit. The, uh, drafting pit that was installed, uh, this was a training session I did back in February for several area departments. Um, and we just tested our first apparatus. We had, uh, uh, truck three, which is the, the ladder truck that was at, uh, station three, go out for an engine replacement. And anytime we have a major repair done to an apparatus, we have to perform a pump test on it to make sure it will test the capacity. We're able to do that ourselves now. We used to have to call in a vendor from outside. They'd bring stuff with them. It typically took two or three weeks. So we really were supposed to delay. Sometimes we go ahead and put the truck in service, but we're supposed to delay until we tested it. Uh, we're able to do that test ourselves now. We did the first one last week, um, and, uh, the drafting pit is working fantastic for us. And so we'll start doing our own annual testing, um, and that, uh, that, uh, major repair testing, uh, ourselves. Um, and not only is that good because it saves us money, um, but it also is fantastic training for our drivers. Uh, a lot of our driver operators, they do not get to pump these tests at full cap, or these trucks at full capacity. And that's what they get to do during this. So they really get to put trucks through its paces and make sure they can do everything it's supposed to do. And so it's fantastic training for them to actually get to do that, um, in a controlled situation.
I appreciate your leadership on that. I know that with that project, which you're, um, was, was something that was important team you came up with. And I think that's really nice that we, um, have that asset and do it in a way that water-wise and that you're recycling that water and we're using it, not, you know. You use a lot of water.
Do.
As we, um, as, as the conversations around water become more and more, you know, important as we're growing, I think that it's to your credit and to be highlighted that that, that resource, your, you know, thoughtful, not just on what you need for the training, but to do that in a, in a way that really manages our water use as well. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks ma'am. Appreciate that.
Does city of Temple only, uh, departments to use that or do other departments go over and use that asset?
So we will make it available to others and, and I've talked to some other departments about potentially using that. So I anticipate that they will start using it. We, we've only had it operational now for about, uh, maybe a month or so. We've had some of the parts for, we're still waiting on some more to come in. Um, but yeah, everybody will be welcome to use it. So, yeah, yeah. Uh, so this was some training we did out the solid waste facility. Uh, it was confined space training. And again, it's, uh, one of our special operations, uh, that, uh, that we've had funded for a few years. Um, you know, I've showed a lot of the collapse stuff and everything because I like showing the mayor daughter's house, uh, pictures. But, um, this time it's actually, uh, we were doing a, a confined space training here. Uh, and you can actually see where we've got the ladder truck set up inside the building, uh, using it as a lift point, uh, for some of the spaces that every now and again, the employees have to get down in and clean. That way, you know, we can go rescue them. We practiced with, uh, with the, uh, solid waste staff, uh, to make sure that they understood what we were gonna do. And, uh, it also taught us how their facility works. So again, it's a great, uh, a great training, uh, program and, uh, great cooperation between our departments as well to make sure that everybody's safe. Uh, this is some photos of our current, uh, fire training academy. Uh, again, just going through different, uh, evolutions. Uh, this one here, everybody always, uh, kind of laughs and comments on it. Uh, so that is, uh, they are learning about how tra- fire travels through houses, um, and what's called flow paths. And so, uh, there's openable windows and doors on that. And as you open and close things, it would, it, you get to see how fire will travel. So that way, if you're in a fire and something happens, you kind of know what's going on and what to expect from that point. But everybody watches that very close and, uh, yes, that is made of wood. Yes, we do set it on fire and yes, it does burn up. So it's a one-use type thing. So, uh, but we are, we, uh, do have a budget requested for one of those. That's, uh, that's metal that we'll be able to use over and over again. So. Uh, this is one of our recent, uh, paramedic graduates. And so always like to, to recognize those, uh, those accomplishments. Uh, that's a huge accomplishment. It's over a year program. Now it's about thirteen months to get your paramedic, uh, license. Um, he, uh, this is, uh, firefighter McKeska. He just got it completed that back a few months ago. Uh, we currently have, I think, four or five others in the program and a few others getting ready to start. And so, uh, again, that paramedic program and you, you remember the, the number of EMS calls we do a year, uh, we are an integral part of that emergency medical system, uh, from the first response to the transport with, uh, Temple EMS to the ER to an actual, uh, long-term stay or fix. So these folks are, are really an integral part of the safety of our citizens throughout that entire medical process. Um, I, I don't know if anyone saw this or not. We, I think we did a, a social media story on it, but one of our firefighters, firefighter Woodall, uh, has participated the last two years in the world's strongest firefighter competition. Um, I did not know that there was such a thing, uh, up until about three years ago. Uh, he is a, uh, he was a football player in college. He played over at U of, uh, U of MB. Um, and I think he was a three or four-year starter. He was really good and he's a big guy too. So he makes me look really, I mean, I'm not a big guy, but he's a really big guy. Um, and, uh, anyway, he got, uh, interested in this. He, uh, uh, competed for the last, uh, first time last year. Uh, and then he went again this year. Uh, I think the first year he placed eighteenth and this year he placed thirteenth. So he moved up, uh, three. And that's, uh, again internationally. So there are firefighters from all over the world who came and did that. So I think thirteenth internationally is pretty fantastic. And I think he was second or third from the state of Texas. So, uh, he's, but it's one of those, he's learning kind of the process and what's, uh, you know, what they do now. And so I anticipate he will be moving up in that. I, I'm hoping for a top ten next year. So, but, uh, he, uh, he really represents us well. He's a really great guy. Like I say, really big and strong guy too. Uh, junior park cadets, again, we've got the programs that are, uh, here in just a couple of weeks. Um, it's, uh, it's just an enormously popular program. Uh, this year we filled the program. Uh, we had about a hundred and thirty seats available plus about twenty, uh, standby positions, um, and those filled in thirty-five minutes. Um, and it was one of those, we normally tell folks, hey, on April first, and it's not an April Fool's joke, um, although people get mad at us about it. But we always say, hey, we're gonna open up the, the signups at eight. If they're not open by eight oh one, and I think we're at eight oh three this year, we're starting, our phones start ringing off the walls. Why are you not open? Why, you know, how can, how can we do this? And so as soon as it opens, it fills up very fast. And so it, like I say, tremendously popular program, a lot of repeat kids that come back and, and enjoy it. And so again, fantastic program and want to thank you guys for letting us do that. Um, so, uh, everybody remembers this call from last year, from April twenty-seventh to last year, um, the, the major traffic accident out on highway thirty-six. Um, so each year the one hundred club, which is a public safety organization that recognizes firefighters and police officers and EMS workers, uh, and dispatchers. Um, uh, each year they do an award ceremony where they recognize officer of the year, firefighter of the year, EMT of the year, what have you. Uh, this year, uh, I put this in for outstanding team of the year because of teamwork that happened here, um, with all of the folks that were there. Uh, and then plus, uh, you know, some of our tow truck wo- uh, workers, uh, temple towing, uh, wards, uh, groans. Um, and then our, our crane folks are, one guy from Meta and then I don't remember where the cranes were from, but anyway, just a super team effort on this, uh, and we were successful. We won it. Um, and so we got that award last week, uh, a really nice ceremony. Um, and, uh, in talking with the, uh, one hundred club folks, uh, it was the largest team that had ever been, uh, submitted. And so, uh, I think we had thirty of us that went, uh, to the event, but, um, uh, again, just it, a tremendous standard of, of, uh, just what teamwork can do and how, how, uh, it can be so successful. Uh, let's say, they said when they saw it and they kind of read through the, the, uh, admission, it was like, yeah, this is it. You know, there was, there was no voting necessarily. They just knew that, that ours was it. So, uh, again, very proud of all the folks that were there. Uh, you know, uh, our temple fire folks, uh, EMS and PD folks and then, uh, you know, our mutually partners. And we've got just some great, uh, great people that work for all of those organizations. Plus our mutually partners are fantastic as well and help out. And so again, just very proud of all of them. So. Um, rescue elves, we have our rescue elf distribution since our, uh, last time we talked and, um, uh, over two hundred and fifty families and, and over three hundred and some odd kids. Um, a great program and we've been talking about how to expand that because of the needs that are in the city. Um, and so I, and I don't remember who it was that suggested, but we came up with, uh, in, I think Heather mentioned it early, earlier, uh, an event called Clay's for Claus. Um, and so basically what it was is a day that we all went out and shot, uh, sporting clays at Weber's out here north of Temple, um, as a fundraiser for, uh, for the rescue elf program. And so, uh, had a great, uh, uh, just a tremendous amount of great sponsors. Uh, very helpful in, uh, in all, uh, everybody I talked to at the event had a fantastic time, um, and are looking forward to our next one and which we will be doing. It's gonna be, uh, April twelfth next year. Um, and so we will be sponsoring another one of these, uh, but through, uh, the efforts of, uh, you know, the, the fire staff, uh, plus, uh, Heather's folks, uh, and all of the, the marketing folks, uh, plus, uh, Jennifer Emerson in finance and, uh, Tracy. I never can say her last name. Okay, thank you.
Don't ask me again.
Yeah, she, she was awesome as well. They were, they all made it happen and had a great time, but we were able to raise over eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for the event, which, um, will really, uh, let us expand the rescue elf's program. And for the first time, I think in the history since I've been here, I don't have my wife going, oh my God, we ain't got enough money. So she is very happy that we are where we are today because of this. And so again, thanks to all of those folks.
I see a couple of, uh, familiar logos up there, too cheek.
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you, guys.
Yes. And so, uh, I did this, I think my last one, but again, I don't think we, uh, as, uh, departments get to say it enough to y'all. Um, you know, y'all are what, uh, allow us to get our jobs done. And so we appreciate the, the fact that you, uh, uh, you, you know, you provide us with the, uh, the items and, uh, the things that we need. And I know sometimes, especially when I start talking about trucks, I know I talk about a lot of money because I'm talking to millions of dollars every time I talk about a truck. Um, and I, I really am appreciative and I think our staff is very appreciative, uh, of the fact that you, uh, you trust our judgment on a lot of the stuff that we do. And, uh, you support us on all of the, the, uh, the requests that we do put in and support the department. And so again, we thank you guys very much for, uh, for that support and, and believing in us. So. Any questions?
No more tornadoes, no more.
No such promises, sir.
With trucks.
Yeah, I, I have, you know, the, the anniversary's next week and, uh, I've told a lot of folks that, you know, uh, May twenty-second's not a good day for me and, uh, I'm taking May twenty-second off and I'm gonna go hide somewhere.
We encourage that. Where you carry your phone with you so you can watch the.
I'm, I'm debating. Um, I think Jennifer will make me, but, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, I'm gonna go hide on the twenty-second. I'm, uh, I gotta be real honest with you. That, uh, happening on the same day was something that I don't wanna do again.
Three's not a charm.
No, three is not a charm.
Really one common denominator.
I know.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm going and hiding. So, um, but.
Training or a chief meeting or something?
It was. I was at, uh, at a, uh. Yeah, well, I will be in town. I just will not be in the office. Yeah.
Is Black May leave?
Yeah, yeah.
She may leave.
Well, she goes through another one. I think she will. She may leave me. So, I don't know. But, uh, yeah, I think she's had enough of them as well. So, uh, but anyway.
You're stuck. You probably will get another job offer from April.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think if I would have happened to apply somewhere else, I'd be going. We've seen what happened to the last two places you were.
That's a memory that is, that I don't know that I'll ever forget, chief. And you probably don't even know that I witnessed this, but when we were at the EOC, um. But when we were at the E O C, um, during the tornado, right after you, you had come from wherever I feel like maybe College Station at a chief's meeting. And you came straight, you know, straight away and you didn't stop at home. And, um, you know, at some point, your lovely bride came up and y'all, you know, had a moment of embrace or something. And it just, it just strikes me how sacrificial, you know, the work that, that you and your team and, and, you know, so all of y'all, you know, all, all, our whole, our whole organization is, you, you know, you don't go home first. You don't take care of yourself first. You come to respond to the citizens and, and meet the need of the community first. And, and I, I, uh, was sitting there. Again, I don't think you probably even knew I was watching you, but it just was a, it was striking to me. Like that, 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 that is a man and a family, you know, to your wife too, here for service. Because they, they, they came, you came straight to this station and in a time when your family has needs too, you know? And, um, it's, it's sacrificial and it's appreciated.
Well, thank you. Yeah. Uh, you know, I've, I've said for quite a while, it took me several years, several more years than it should have to, to realize how much she sacrifices, not just, you know, me and the time that I spend. But how much time that she's had spent without me and how many thing, things she's had to do without me there because of the requirements of the job and the needs of the job and the, the cities. And, um, and yeah, it's, it's tough on all of us. And, um, you know, probably from, uh, you know, all of the things that I've been through. You know, uh, my son was being talked to after the Joplin tornado. And it's probably one of the things that struck me the hardest, really, I think, opened my eyes to that. Was he was, he was talking to somebody, we was doing an interview and he said, you know, I, I went from the, uh, cause we were at his high school graduation when that went. And he said, you know, I went from the happiest moment in my life where, you know, I was getting ready to go out and join the world to homeless in about twenty minutes.
Wow.
And it, you know, and I, it, it just really struck me. And that was several months afterwards. And it just really struck me that how much it affected him as well. And the fact, you know, cause he went on to talk a little bit about the fact that I wasn't able to be there to help them. And he had to really step up kind of in my place to help my wife while I waited through the, the other stuff at the city. And so it, it, yeah, it, trust me, it, like I say, when I, when I tell people that, you know, it's not wasted on me how, you know, significant these events are and stuff. I, I really mean it. I mean, and I've seen the, the direct result of it personally. You know, it's something when you have to struggle through it with the city and with the department, but then also with it personally, it's, it's a toll and it takes it on everybody. Yeah, just that one person. But thank you. I, I did not know that. So.
I didn't mean to.
I was not freaking out by it.
You know, it's just striking to know, you know, and, and you don't, you don't know, you know, what damage your house took. And it just, it's, it's service of us though.
Well, she was mad at me too. And, and, uh, because I, I drove through the storm that went through, through, uh, Temple to get back. And, um, you know, she was pretty mad at me, the fact that I did that and didn't wait it out. I just told her, I said, I gotta get back.
She didn't look.
Yeah, I think she was pretty glad I, I survived.
Pretty glad.
Pretty glad. There, yeah, there are days.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all for that. All right, it's about four thirty. Let's take about a five or seven minute break. Let's recess for just a minute and then let's get back in and get after it pretty quickly. So, see y'all back in about ten minutes at most.
It's day five and then it'll be ten.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, well, my, my mom's two daughters. Y'all know my brother was.
Good job. Good job. Good job.
Saluting behind doors?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's not.
You know, my brain.
It is.
He went up there already.
Always work.
What are you doing? Oh, damn. They still go through it. I agree.
It's now about twenty-five minutes until five we will restart the workshop. First thing, can you second is discuss maybe you any regular meeting agenda items? So the notes I have is that Councilor Cuckington will be abstaining on eleven H. Council or staff, anything else that you need to talk about before we move on?
Mayor, I just wanted to note that you have five items related to bond on the agenda. Dan Webb Miller and Jacqueline Hale will be at the meeting. And with the five bond items, three of them are new money and two of them are refunding. Of the one of the three new money for capital projects is it's a delegation authority because we want to get authority to issue but not wait till we open our bids or the most wanted treatment plan expanded before we actually go out and issue the bonds.
Okay.
So.
In your presentation on the refunds, do you have information on the amount saved?
Yes, I do.
Always like that.
Yeah, it's good. And also on one of the refundings, it's a reagustin zone or terms refunding. And we worked with Dan and bought insurance. We have an interest in sitting with a reserve fund required by the ordinance that when we issue the debt, that just sits there for the life of the bond. It's averaging or maximum annual debt service per issue. Well, with this insurance, we're able to free that money up. We're going to be able to free up over five million. We'll be due around two million with this refunding and then we'll be bringing the item back. So they can have money that was set aside in the reserve now has a surety bond to guarantee to the bondholders. And that five million can be used on projects.
So you're bonding your bonds, bonding your bonds?
No, it's 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 the way you're releasing that reserve.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, and the refund.
Okay.
So we're paying cash for the.
The policy.
Sure.
The bond.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Anything else? All right, Mr. Chamber.
All right. Good afternoon. So we're here to talk about an exception to the final plat of Leon Reserve Phase Two. The applicants, Yogo Engineering, WBW Development, WB has been here, but I know they have some slides they'd like to present, but at least to speak. Travis Parks, their attorney, welcome you all. And so just a quick staff overview. And so this, this is the final plat for a proposed three hundred and eighty-six dwelling unit for single family home development. Phase one was previously approved. This is phase two to the north. And to the right, you can see just a little bit more detail with the aerial forty-plus acres. Zone, single family two with a planned development. That's from June of twenty-three. Once again, preliminary plat approved for three hundred and eighty-six lots. However, that is contingent upon Cross Timber Boulevard that I've shown with the green circle and asterisk there. That that's a street projection that is not connected to an existing street. And so I'll go over that in a little bit detail that that's for future development, but more to allow above three hundred units, which they're allowed by right with two entrances along FM ninety-three. But to get beyond that requires approval of an exception. And so Phase One was for two hundred and seventeen lots. So essentially, they would be allowed with what they're showing by right to add eighty-three lots, but not the hundred and sixty-nine that they're requesting. All the lots meet the single family two standards, tract A drainage up in the northeast corner. And so, yeah, just want to go to directly to our subdivision entrance code just to show you. You've got the number of lots that are allowed here, standard design here, which is just a local street. One lane in, one lane out, alternate designs which allow, we're really talking about emergency vehicle access here. So glad to have Landy Fire Marshal here. Landy is a big part of our development review committee. But especially when we're talking about this standard, you know, it's not a planning standard. This is really about emergency vehicle access in case of a fire or a wreck on ninety-three. Are there other ways for them to get into the neighborhood? The widened entrances allow at least for another vehicle to get get by in that entrance. But that is what we're talking about. And so in the alternate design column, you can see the number of alternate design entrances, forty-one feet. One gets you a hundred and fifty dwelling units, two gets you three hundred, three oh one plus requires three.
So three oh one plus requires three, and we have two.
We have two. Yes, sir. And so we've got it. We've got it outlined here. Cheryl's the case manager has done a really good job with this, providing a lot of necessary detail. And so Phase Two connect to Cross Timbers that that is this future collector that they can build their section, but ultimately it would require connection to an existing street to be able to get beyond the three, the three hundred. It's important to note that tech stocks require a traffic impact analysis for this development. They also worked with the Boker's development across ninety-three to be able to make sure that those are coordinated. And they are in agreement to implement the whatever the traffic impact analysis required. That includes signals at FM ninety-three and ninety-three cross spur slash Cross Timbers Boulevard and at Old Highway ninety-five. And those signals would be required to be put in at specific thresholds of development. One of those thresholds is fifty-five percent of the homes built. Deceleration lanes on FM ninety-three, left turn and right turn. Aguayo Way constructed is only right in, right out. So that is the entrance to the east. And then left turn deceleration lanes construct on ninety-three at old highway ninety-five with the signalization. It's important to note, street projections, which we require on average, every thousand feet. The railroad is to the west, so that is, that's, that's an exception that can be approved administratively per code. And they're providing street projections where needed. But once again, this is not about future. This is about once, once homes are built that the access is needed at that time. And it's three improved entrances. The three alternate design entrances, minimum forty-one pavement width that we previously discussed. They have two along FM ninety-three. The third would have to be along Cross Timbers because that is a designed to collector standard. So that is wide enough to be able to for forty-one feet or more. And, you know, in the future, but they'd have to go through federal property to ultimately get over to highway, Old Highway ninety-five to make that count, to allow beyond the three hundred dwelling units. And so staff is not recommending approval of this exception. And so with fires help in the analysis, the two entrances on ninety-three are less than five hundred feet apart. And there is no, unlike some other developments in the past where we've been able to work out an emergency access only with a gate, click to intergate or emergency vehicle access, that is not currently an option with this development. And so that's part of the consideration. And so despite the implementation of the traffic impact analysis recommendations that that help alleviate, you know, some of the traffic concerns, they do not adequately address the emergency vehicle access concerns by staff's interpretation. Water and sewer would sewer would come from actually a previous WB development to the west, Alta Vista. Park fees.
Back to park fees, please.
Yes, sir. So with both phases, the park fees were total eighty-six, eight hundred and fifty. And they they're planning to do a private park, the pavilion playground to meet those requirements. And that's an exception that has been approved and that was done at the preliminary plat stage.
Can you point to where the park would go?
Honestly, I don't recall. Phase, phase one.
Yes. Set a triangle then?
Oh, there you go. Thank you. And so staff's recommendation, despite a planning and zoning commission unanimous recommendation for approval. And we're actually just going to show you a clip from, from that meeting, Mayfair. Because it's really honestly some of it's up for interpretation of what they meant. So with that said, the introduction of that is, I was not there and I apologize for that. Unlike, unlike chief, I went to my family. But my fourth, my, my fourth grader had a.
I go back to.
Fire concert. So I missed that, but Kyle and Cheryl did an excellent job. But ultimately, let's just hear from, from them. Yes.
Before you move on, I want to go back to the park fees.
Okay.
So park fees are requested to be waived, correct?
They have.
They, they have been.
With, with conditions on.
And that would be a private park.
Private park, yes, sir.
The public, the funds to build a public park have been waived in lieu of building the private park, which means the public is not, is not available to the public.
Well, and to be fair, and that is, that's common in a lot of these developments, especially ones that are not particularly close to a public park. And they, they cannot exclude the public from those parks.
Okay. Good. Thank you. That's good.
So it still meets the public park intent.
Okay.
And in some cases, it can be beneficial in that it's also a privately maintained park that available for the residents of that neighborhood and others if they.
Good. That's, that's, that's the difference between.
The.
Can I make another comment?
Yes. I, I go back to the, the comment that years ago, we made this a, a commit, this is a unelected commission, meaning the planning and zoning. And some of these things sometime they need to go to council because they are an elected official. And so I'm at, I don't know what y'all are thinking here, but I'm at the point of where we approve this the way it is tonight. And then we let it go to council and both sides can make that case at that time because I don't, no matter what we're going to do here tonight is not going to make either one happy. And I, I haven't gone back to watch the YouTube. If I would have known, I would have gone back and watched it just to listen to it. But that's where I'm at. That's my comments. I don't know if any of y'all have any comments.
Could I just say whether it'll move forward to the council, whether your recommendation is for the exception or against the exception?
Unless we do it in a denial.
No, you'll still, if you, you're just making a recommendation to the council.
Well, then that's.
I mean, feel free to go either, either direction, but either way, it still will go to the council.
I always look at it as if it's denied, then it stops until they reconcile. Okay. Anybody else?
I just think we, in the future, need to take a closer look at SF three zoning. We see a lot more of it than we used to. I can't even remember the last time we did an SF one subdivision, but if this was an SF two, we wouldn't even be talking about it right now.
This is.
This is.
It is two.
It's SF two, right. Yeah. Plan development, but SF two is the base.
At one, at one point, it started as a lower density zoning and they came back and I remember being on the board when that happened, so.
Right. Correct.
Maybe we overzoned it.
Other comments? I think it's, it's just like Adams and some of the others, we're going to be behind the gun on when it comes to ninety-three.
Yeah, it'll be twenty thirty something.
Yeah, I mean, it's, once again, we're behind the gun, so. Okay, that's.
If there are no more questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve as stated in number eight FY twenty-five dash twenty dash PLT.
Okay.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Rhodes and a second by Commissioner Smith to approve item eight FY dash twenty-five dash twenty dash PLT to city council per staff recommendation. Tiffany, may we have a vote?
Commissioner Morales.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Jerosic.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Prager.
Aye.
Commissioner Longino.
Aye.
Vice Chair Smith.
Aye.
Chair Crowsey.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous and the motion carries.
Is there any further business? If not, the meeting.
All right. Thank you. So there's some confusion. You also hear the chair restate the motion per staff recommendation. Staff recommendations clearly for disapproval. One way or another, what is clear is that they were really voting for you all to make that decision. So here we are. All right. So just a couple of quick slides and just a quick summary of staff's conclusion to recommend disapproval. They have two improved entrances, which gets them to three hundred dwelling units. A third one would be required to, to get to three eighty-six. Both entrances are less than five hundred feet apart, which is the big, big issue in terms of emergency vehicle access. There are no additional emergency access points proposed, such as what was done for previous subdivisions like Bellaterra off of, you know, the council. Well, remember different iterations of that one, which Burton Lane, private street, there's emergency access from the west side. It's not all, all access is not from Thirty-first Street, at least for emergency vehicles, Trojan Tract on Jupiter Road. Only emergency access, once again, away from Pegley, it's another access point. Future street projections do not count towards the subdivision entry standards. The, the entry standards are intended to primarily address emergency vehicle access. This is, this is beyond planning. This is about emergency vehicles being able to get into the development. And staff has consistently documented during, documented during the rezoning preliminary plat processes that this project has only approval for three hundred units. And I know this team is primarily new. We dealt with another, you know, previous team that is more clean based. So it's not, nothing against them, but I think certainly maybe something got lost in translation along the way in these various phases. And this is just an example. This is from the preliminary plat staff report, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And there's actually another reference that reiterates this point in a different way. But clearly states that an additional access point we required to get beyond to three hundred. So the preliminary plat was approved because they had an opportunity to be able to provide that third connection. They were unable to do so before submitting this final plat. We identified that that requires an exception and here we are.
I mean, I'd also like to add and just remind Council that, you know, after the zoning of this item, which included as part of the plan development and I guess in many cases, just a reiteration that you couldn't go beyond. In that case, there were the, I think it was focused on a hundred and fifty lots without the second entrance. But this, this has been the topic from the very beginning of this, of this zoning case. Following that council meeting, I met with representatives from WB because there, there are challenges with this property as Brian has laid out, the railroad to the, the western boundary and there's some US government property and some on core substations. It is a very challenged property to get that a third access. And I offered to, you know, work in partnership with the cost share agreement where, or I'm sorry, developer participation agreement where we could work together on off-site improvements to bring that third connection to reality. Either through right of way acquisition or cost share on the off-site part of the collector that was not part of the development. And I, I'm not sure if their staffing changes, you know, there was, I'm, I'm not sure what, what if they just weren't interested in that or if there were staffing changes that, that caused that to be, you know, something they, they, you know, fell off their radar. But you, council may recall that we did budget in the twenty twenty-four, so not this year, but last year funding for that project. And we just never heard back anything from WB on a plan for how we could work together on that, that third connection. So it is admittedly a very challenging project, but we, we are willing to work with them on, you know, those offsite elements that might need to come to the table to create that third connection.
Anything else?
Not for me. You have to like to speak and I guess, did you want the exhibit?
Well, first of all, thank y'all for having me. We had prepared a five slide exhibit kind of anticipating that we would not get a ton of time here. I do like that you got to hear the clip from Commissioner Rose that we really want you all to get the full story. I'm not sure if you're going to get it in three to six minutes, but I'm going to do my best to try to give it to you. Because looking at the plot, I'm not sure I've got three before we need to start.
You can.
Ten. All right. Thank you. I want to point out a couple of things as a clarification. It's just a quick procedural thing. About three weeks ago, it was requested of us to send in a letter requesting an exception. That's where I actually stepped into this project. And it was relating to that third access. Remember it's three. Three is the number that we're talking about. Got to get to three. Need to get to three. I reviewed it and I counted four. Four, because I read the subdivision regulations, the way they're written and the way they should be interpreted. I want to show them to you right now. You'll go to the next slide, please. And while we're talking about this, just as a little bit of background, the Texas Supreme Court has said for a very long time that statutory interpretation, you're supposed to give the most effects the words that you can. In other words, you can't construe one provision one way and make another provision meaningless. So you've got to do what gives the effects to everything as best as you can. What C staff is proposing, they have to eliminate some of this provision in order to make it happen. My way harmonizes it. You can get to four. Minimum entrances is the key word. That is the unit for one, two and three. Minimum entrances, one, two and three. Do y'all have a copy of the residential subdivision interest access, access design standards? Skylar, if you've got extra copies, I'm happy to.
Just what you just handed out.
We've got.
I want to read the, the sentence at the very bottom of, right underneath this grid that's up here on the screen. Do we need to, I'll wait just a moment. Precious seconds, one precious seconds. Subdivision, street access, design requirements may be satisfied with a combination of standard or alternate designs. The combination with access to other subdivisions in accordance with the table above and figures one through seven. I'm going to focus on figures five and six, Richard, on a couple following slides from here. But before I get there, if you go to the next slide, what the city staff is telling you is that I need three alternate entrances to get approval for this project. That's why they're not recommending approval. They're saying this number is only for alternate designs. Now, PNC, this was fleshed out in way greater detail and it's kind of being glossed over here today. But I want to make it very, very apparent that the reason it's in common review, you write the, the two twelve section zero, zero, nine stuff that we've got to do for the legislature to, you know, we've got to tie stuff directly to a statute code or ordinance for a reason for disapproval, right? That's a, that's a city requirement. Those are the reasons, the only reasons that we can have disapproval. You haven't met or required. This is the only time that we've ever heard of anything. It's come from mobility. It's not come from fire code. It is only coming from this section and it's a bad interpretation of the section. Alternate designs, three alternate designs is their interpretation. But if we go further into the figures themselves, I'll give you what the real interpretation is. If you can go to the next slide. This, in the unmarked version, it's on page three of your repack it. Says that certain alternate designs are the equivalent of two entrances. I've got to get to three entrances. So if I've got a minimum of forty-one feet curb back to curb back, collecting to an access street with nothing fronting a lot, that's two entrances. If I've got one with this median in the middle and I've got a collectively forty-one feet back to back on both sides of it, that too is counted as two entrances. If I've got two of these, I have the equivalent of four entrances. You'll go to the next slide, please. This is Cross Timbers Boulevard. You're, you're talking, you are saying that the two roads that intersect with ninety-three. You're calling that four. What I'm saying is this standard is calling it four. I'm just reading it. But yes, where it says this alternative is the equivalent of two entrances. I don't know how else I'm supposed to apply that besides counting it as two entrances. I don't, I mean, that seems like a pretty plain language one. That's another thing with the Supreme Court. When it's plain language and you can understand it, use it. So we did. We got fifty-six feet of that curb back, back of curb to back of curb with a median. This meets the standard. It actually exceeds the standard. I don't see how this, which says count this as two. I don't see how this, which says countless is two. That we can't count that as two. Just by going by the standards.
Can I ask a question? So on two entrances, are you saying then that that equates to two? Standard entrances or two alternate entrances? It has to fit into one category or the other because we have two categories. So which type of entrances?
On the top of that page in that grid. Where it says standard design and alternate design, it just says minimum entrances without distinction of whether it's standard entrance. Alternate entrance, but because it's not modified by the word design, I think it's just an entrance.
So again, just using your language and and interpreting things in a way that makes sense and not into the absurdity. We have two types of entrances, so it has to be either one or the other.
Okay, can we go back up two slides? Cause I see what you're saying. It's a good point, but I think that when you look at the grid, it makes sense that. I'm sorry, one more up. There we go. Sorry, one down. It was the one with the circles in the middle talking about the different grids. Here we go. Yes, this one. So we've got one or the other, right? It's a good point because right here it says. It it did say standard design and alternate design, right? So these are the standards only. These are the alternates only. Except two, three and four are also two, three and four here. These are standard designs. These are standard designs. So you're saying that maybe the code needs to say you can satisfy this with the combination of standard and alternate designs. Well, it does say, so we're in good spot. This is my point that we've got to just, we got to harmonize all of it. We can't cherry pick one place or the other, reading it all in harmony. You can combine them over here. They don't just have to stay in this column. And if they're over here, this number is just talking about entrances, whether they're standard or whether they're alternate. It's it's just an entrance. This number is just an entrance. You get to three, either by twos or by one, you've met the standard.
This may as well rather check.
It does say that.
And nowhere in here, in this entire thing, does it grant anyone the power to require three alternate entrances?
It's in the column, alternate entrance, three for three hundred and one.
That's alternate designs, minimum entrances, the minimum here, this is the quantity that's the minimum. It's the only thing that this minimum without. Without looking for numbers, this minimum entrances doesn't mean anything. It's got to be a quantity here, else it's not a minimum. That, am I making sense? We can look at A, B, C and D if you'd like. Under B, the second and third entrance accents, access. Under C, future street access and under D, residential driveway access. These all apply to every kind of design.
Right, but that's irrelevant to the number of entrances that are committed according to how many. Residential dwellings are included in this plan or in the neighborhood subdivision.
The the three here is not relevant.
Three, there are three alternate entrances, alternate design entrances that are required for three hundred and one. And more. Dwelling units.
So, so just just go with me on here. You're saying that anything in this column, if I do three of them, they're approved. Cause I've got two, three and four. Those are all standards. Five or six, why does it matter if that counts as two? I mean, it does say it counts as two. Where does that matter in this this interpretation? We've got a whole provision that says this is the equivalent of two entrances. And if we're interpreting this to where it has to matter somewhere, where else would it matter? Y'all got like fifteen minutes. I think you can play.
Hey, man.
Will you just ask the question?
I apologize, I'm. Well, you know. I apologize. We can continue on. I at least want to show you the rest of the presentation. Again, I do thank you that you worked. Uh, two more slides, please. Ziguaya Way is the same thing. Uh, one more slide as well. It's got a minimum of forty-one feet curb back to curb back. Proceed to the next slide. Oh, that's all you have? Okay, our construction plans have this forty-one feet back. So we've met the requirement for. This note here as well, which again, the only way to to deal with this. Is either strike it out or countless as two entries. So if it's not counting as two, I don't know how how. So I apologize again. If there are any questions, I will be more civil. Ultimately, it's the responsibility of this board. To to obviously make, you know, make approvals within within the bounds of the requirements. It's also the responsibility of this board to be very careful about the things that we approve for resident safety. Everyone knows the issues up and down Highway ninety-three. And, you know, we've often said that. The state is not going to take care of ninety-three until they have to, right? Until it's so packed. And it becomes a a true danger to the public. I think we're probably approaching that close. But to dump that much traffic, I don't know how many trips that is. I've not seen the TIA. Um, but to put that much traffic out onto ninety-three on. Two or four, and you however you're defining them. I think it's a little suspect personally to call both sides. Of an of the of the lanes, if it's only two lanes wide, to call both of those an entrance and an exit. Because if I'm pulling out on the ninety-three and for instance, if I if I pull out of this subdivision and I want to turn left, which would be to the east. I'm not going to use the left hand lane because people are going to be coming in that while I'm trying to get out. That's a little dubious for me. But mostly it's about safety. And to dump that much traffic out onto ninety-three, it's just my opinion. To put that much safety out onto ninety-three, I'm sorry, I'm not saying this well, to put that much traffic out on the ninety-three. Is a true safety issue. And then, because you guys happen to. Because the this this plot of land is fairly narrow where it connects to ninety-three. You can't make the minimum thousand foot width or distance between. One lane and the other. If there's a, if there's a major accident at. At either one of those entrances or exits or whatever you're calling them. A fire truck pulls up. Squat cars pull up, they need to shut down ninety-three, worst case scenario, you've got gridlock in that neighborhood. No one's going to be able to get in or out of that. And I just. I don't even want to sell houses, but at what point does the safety of our residents? Come into play? At what point? At what point do you say there's a limit to this? We need to figure this out before we take our customers. People that have bought houses from you or builders bought lots to build to ultimately sell. At what point does the customer matter? I'd love to give you the answer if you're, if you're ready. Uh, it matters at every point in our design. That's why we got a traffic analysis. That's why we implemented it. The the ninety-three issue that you're talking about, it's when that improvement goes in before we're anywhere near three hundred houses. This full build out, we're talking about maybe twenty twenty-eight, uh, if everything goes perfectly. Uh, the TIA happens well before that. The TIA also only recommended two connections, but it is specifically for. Safety and traffic flow. So it's not like we haven't considered this ever. I mean, this was the first study we did before we set out to design this. In the last year or so. There was an agreement on one of your projects. I don't remember the name of the, I don't remember the name of the subdivision and. I don't remember all the details of it, but there was an agreement with WBW in the city of Temple that a trail would be put in. Connecting two parks. And. It didn't stipulate, I don't think that the that the agreement stipulated that it had to be done at phase one or phase two or phase three. But ultimately, there ended up being a confrontation between the city of Temple and WBW over a trail. That y'all were supposed to put in. And then you tried to, and that's why I was asking you about the private versus public park. And then you took, you wanted credit for the amenities built in the. In that subdivision, a pool and, you know, except for whatever was built there. To then ultimately say, we have already put in enough amenities that we're not public, so we don't even feel like we need to build the trail. And then ultimately, the city of Temple had to fight your organization to get the trail built. So finally, the check was cut and we even made concessions off of that. And so. A lot of, you know, the promises and this won't be built out until twenty twenty or whatever, all that sort of rings hollow with me. Because of. Uh, past issues that the city of Temple has had with. Uh, the developer. And I I just, I I really have a hard time and then to to trot this out where. It's one of the busiest areas in town. It's a growing area to have two entrances. Quasi entrances, you're calling it four, but in reality, in practice, it's two. It's not even a thousand feet far. To me, as the mayor, as as we work with our constituents, the people that we look at face to face in the grocery store or at church or wherever we are. To in good faith and to lay my head on the pillow at night. To approve that as it's drawn is. It's. It's it's dubious at best. It's unsafe at worst. For a dollar. For what it's worth, the last comment that the city staff put up there with the highlighted sections from a June twenty twenty-four agenda. Uh, the that agenda item itself actually says that it met all of the interest departments under the mobility review. Uh, this is a new issue. So at some point, city staff didn't think it was dubious at best. At some point, the TIA said it was okay. Um, and recommended, for what it's worth, I think that was three years ago that the trails didn't get connected. There was a a development manager that left, didn't tell us. He made a lot of promises that we just didn't keep track of. It was true. It may have been three years ago, didn't get, that it didn't get done, but we just wrapped it up in the last year. So two years over a trail? Well, I mean, fortunately, this is, this will be a textile project. We're not going to get a lot of say in when it goes forward and when it doesn't. I mean, that's. Um, I I want to make sure that that's very clear that we don't get a chance to delay ninety-three. And so the the trail that was connected, I mean, yes, it took few years and you have my sincere apologies for that as well. Um, I I wish that we had approached it better and wish we had better knowledge back when that happened, but that happened quite a bit ago. So I I don't know that I can. Tie that anchor around my neck here and drop me off the side of the boat. It's it's a different day. This is a different project. Text dot is involved. I'm still just looking at the standards and I do need to remind you that when all the regulations have been met, it's a ministerial duty to approve the plat. There's, it it doesn't really matter about anything beyond are the regs met? As written, they still appear to be met. I understand the sentiment. I mean. I'm pretty, you know, tied up in in knots about what happened three years ago too. I I hated that it happened because I. When that happened, I said someday we're going to pay for them. I don't know if that's today. I I hope it's just today if it's today, but. Um, I don't know how long it's going to be, but you know, tell me what I can do to make it not be any other day and I'll see what I can do. I don't know what else I can say. I mean, that's that's why I'm here today with your your standards and regulations that we have followed as best we can as they are written. And. If we can't rely on this right here, this is the alternative equivalent of two entrance. What can we rely on? If these words have no meaning, where do we look? Though I've taken more of your time than I need to. I think two plus two is still going to equal four. We've met the requirements. It's become a ministerial duty. It needs to be approved because it's met everything. So, thank you. I know we're late. We've been late before. But I've never made you late. I should have said my name is Brian. Alright, very good. Do we need to have further discussions on this? Head on down to council and. You may have any questions, comments, thoughts, ideas before we close?
Now, he's right in that it's a ministerial duty, so. The issues that we've had in the past, they do hold those set aside and your decision does need to be made just today on this issue. Um, with the entrances, the design standards, all that that Brian went over with you. That's what your decision needs to be based on and and not our past bad experience. Get that on the record. That's what it would be based on.
That being said, we do have a disagreement. And he he has a legal interpretation. He's providing that's not the legal interpretation that that staff believes in.
It's been our consistent interpretation. We would fight it in other subdivisions. Could it be written better? Yes, but I think that. Interpreting it the way that we have consistently interpreted does not leave any term unused. It doesn't. Make any portion of this not apply. It doesn't negate any portion of this. Um, and I'm very confident with the way that we've been interpreting and applying this standard. Correct. And because again, if you look just at the chart itself, can you flip it back to the chart real quick? Um, yeah, that'll work. Number of lots, one through seventy-five, can have one standard design entrance and that's all you need. Seventy-six to one fifty, sorry, my eyes are bad. Um, two standard entrances or one alternate. And that one alternate can be a five or six because that can equal to standard design entrances. What is, which is what's required under standard design. The next one fifty-one to three hundred, three standard designed entrances. Or two alternate designs. And then when you get to three hundred and one and above, which is where we are now, you need three alternate design and we are not accepting standard designs. Because of the number of passes that we will have.
It also allows two, three and four. Because two, three, four in the exhibit does not have dimensions. It just calls.
Right, and then five and six can still apply because under. Um, one fifty-one to three hundred, you can use five or six to get two of the three standard design entrances. So it it doesn't negate any of the.
Figure three and five are identical except for the five has forty-one feet back. So I I don't know that that followed because there's something different or else they wouldn't vote either. Three is not five, three is narrow. And just a little grace to address one thing about absurd results. At three hundred lots. There's a three entrances. That's that's on the standard design side. To go to three oh one, you need to have six equivalent entrances. I think that's an absurd goal. You jump up in one, maybe in our case eighty-ish lots and the interest requirements goes from three to six. That may be an absurd result. Unless you look at it that 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 below three hundred lots only requires two, that's also absurd. I mean, if if you're going to apply that standard, you're weak to.
There's, it's another reason why you don't allow five or six, which are the two that allow the if way to two entrances. It, that to me also makes it clear that we're talking about two standard entrances because you don't have five and six as an option for standard entrances. Because you can't have two standard in entrances. Equal one entrance. I mean, it it doesn't make sense in that case, which is why you don't have the option for five or six for two. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense in that case, which is why you don't have the option for five or six for two. It's clear that two, one alternate entrance equals two step down. Smaller standard design entrances, so when you're applying the standard design entrance, the equivalent five or six. There's no way that it, it, the math doesn't, I know I'm not making it up right now. But you can't have. One standard entrance equal two standard entrances, it doesn't make sense. If you have a standard entrance and you're using design five or six, where it says you get two, two can't be one.
That's a normal standard.
Are you talking about required for street projections? That, that is not, so, so that is just making sure that the, the, there are. For lack of a better word, reservations for future connections to other parts of property as they develop. While, while, whereas could be talking about, that's the path that it should replace before the lots are developed, if that makes sense.
Mayor, the, the text op standards really prevail here. They're stricter in terms of the distance between entrances. Text op standards are what really apply, they do meet that, it's just not optimal if those are the only two.
The standard for approval is not optimal, it's meeting the requirements, and we met the text op requirements, right? They approved it. Alright, very good, then I will close, uh, these workshop.